Good, okay. Okay, good morning, everyone. Aloha, kakahiaka, kakou. Welcome to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, the meeting of the Board of Trustees. Today is Thursday, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Current time right now is ten-ten A.M. Lehuah, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Ahuna. Trustee Akaka.
Il.
Mahalo. Trustee Akina is excused. Trustee Alapa.
Present.
Trustee Galutaria.
Il.
Trustee Lindsay.
Present.
Trustee Souza. Trustee Wahehe.
Present.
Chirka Hele.
Present.
You have six trustees present. You have quorum.
Thank you, Lehuah. This meeting can be viewed via livestream on OHA's website at www.oha.org/livestream. For those joining us on Zoom to testify or listen, please note that we're using a webinar platform rather than the standard Zoom meeting format. As an attendee, you will be able to watch and listen to the proceedings. If you wish to testify on a specific agenda item, please follow these steps. One, raise your hand to indicate that you'd like to speak. Two, we will change your status from attendee to panelist when it is your turn. This may take a few seconds, so we appreciate your patience. Three, as a panelist, you will have the option to turn on your camera and unmute yourself to provide testimony. And four, once you have finished testifying, please mute yourself and you will be returned to attendee status. In addition to this, I'd like to remind everyone to please silence your cellphones. This meeting also is being conducted in compliance with HRS Chapter ninety-two, the Ohabai laws and Robert's Rules of Order for Small Boards, as modified by applicable statutes and rules. A few reminders, as we begin, trustees must be recognized by the chair before speaking. Members may raise a hand instead of standing when seeking to obtain the floor and may remain seated while making motions or speaking. Motions need not be seconded. Public testimony will be called on each agenda item and is limited to five minutes per speaker, and the chair may fully participate in a discussion and vote. At this time, the chair would like to now recognize our Chief Operations Officer, Kishon Kikina, to introduce our administrative staff that is with us today. Aloha, Kishon.
Aloha, mai kakou. Mahalo, noe, Chair, trustees. This morning, we have with us our Investment Director and Interim CFO, Ryan Lee, our General Counsel, Everett Ota, Senior Director of Hawaiian Cultural Affairs, Hailama Farden, our Interim Director of Land Assets, Lori Walker, our Director of Community Engagement, Lisa Von Sekona, our Director of Communications, Bill Brennan, our IT Systems Engineer and Administrator, Daniel Santos, and our IT Systems Engineer and Administrator, Arlene Aguinaldo. Mahalo, noe.
Excuse me, thanks. Here with the Board of Trustees, we have Board Secretary, Lehuah Itokazu, we have our interim Chief of Staff, Alina Young, Kapono Kiokona, our Board Counsel, and other trustee aides and secretaries that are here supporting us today. And I'd also like to remind everyone that this is now the second meeting that we're doing that has been broadcast live throughout the state on Olelo. Olelo TV, channel fifty-three? Fifty-three, channel fifty-three. So we mahalo olelo and excited to bring OHA into the homes of our beneficiaries throughout the paeaina. Okay, at this time, we're gonna go, we have a lot of work to do, trustees, on our agenda today, a lot of things to ratify. But first and foremost is we're gonna get a status of OHA activities and an update from our Chief Operations Officer, Kishon, who will also be giving us an update on the six-point-one million dollars of emergency relief aid. And we also have a special guest here to give us an update along with Kishon.
Mahalo, noe, Chair. First and foremost, I'd like to say mahalo noe to our hard-working Li Mahana, our staff at OHA. Through this unprecedented effort to release the six-point-one million dollars in relief funding, it's been evolving extremely quickly, and we've been meeting the moment in every way. With us here today, we have Kohio Lewis, CEO of Hawaiian Council, who I'm gonna invite to the table to give us some updates on the program. Execution.
Thanks, Kishon. Aloha, Kohio. Trustees, as you are well aware, after approval by this Board of Trustees in Hilo last week of the six-point-one million dollars, a contract was quickly executed between the OHA administration and the Hawaiian Council, who prepared through the weekend to launch our emergency relief aid program that went live at nine A.M. this past Monday morning. And Kohio is here to give us an update on that and the disbursement of relief funds throughout the state.
Thank you, Chair, Kahele, and aloha members of the board. I just wanted to provide a quick update on the program. Thank you for the partnership. Some of you may know, we recently administered quite a bit of aid for the state of Hawaii, over fifty thousand applications, and we were able to get out over a hundred million dollars to support families during the pandemic and even after the pandemic. So the good thing about that is we had the systems and the staff in place to immediately build this program. So we're looking forward to, alongside OHA, supporting our beneficiaries. I have with me our Chief Operating Officer, who is directly overseeing that program. She's in charge of the staff, the execution. We do have, we utilize Salesforce, we invested a lot of money to build Salesforce over the years, and so her and her team overnight pretty much created it working through the weekend. So I'm gonna pass it to her to provide some high-level updates on the program. I will say that on the first day, when we opened at nine A.M., just that first day alone, we received over two thousand phone calls to our office. And so we...
Where we're at, as of this morning, we have received about nineteen hundred applications. We've awarded a hundred and eight thousand dollars. When you separate the two, between the federal applications and the SNAP applications, we've got about a thousand and fifty-eight applications on the federal side, and we've got eight hundred and ninety applications on the SNAP side. We've awarded ninety-eight thousand four hundred dollars on the federal side, and then we've awarded nine thousand four hundred fifty dollars on the SNAP side at this time.
I'll just add... I'll just add that one of the big barriers as to why applications are not being processed faster is just a lot of missing documents. So people are either uploading the wrong documents, or they don't have the documents immediately available. They could be starting their application from work or wherever, maybe, and so they don't have all the documents needed. So that requires us to follow up with them. So that's the biggest challenge at this point, is we're just having to reach out to the beneficiaries. We are seeing the need to go out into community to have more touch. There are kupuna out there that are not computer savvy, they don't know how to upload, they don't know how to take pictures and do that stuff. So we are recognizing the challenges and we're adjusting accordingly. We're only three days into the program, but we plan to quickly adjust to fill the needs of the beneficiaries.
Kishon, maybe you can give an update as well. One of the main verification eligibility processes for the applicants is the Hawaiian Registry Card Program. Prior to the council launching on Monday, I know via the daily reports that administration had been putting out, we were experiencing a surge in HRP applications. We are attempting to process those as quickly as possible. Is the Hawaiian Council doing any HRP as well, or is that still OHA staff?
Mahalo, Chair. Yes, they are doing HRP verification as well, and we are no stranger to that influx and just that sheer volume that comes through. And all of the difficulties that they spoke to, we are also very familiar with. It's not easy, but it's also an underscoring that we service many, many generations. Yeah. And they all have different tech capabilities, understandings of the program, and that really highlights the need for crystal-clear communication on both sides. Mahalo.
Kohio, so the distributed amounts that have gone out, you said exceeds a hundred thousand dollars as of this morning. For our trustees, those would be twelve-hundred-dollar checks that have been successfully mailed
Correct.
to federal government employees that have been furloughed.
Correct.
The other tranche is gift cards through participating statewide supermarkets that are going directly to recipients, except for Lanai and Molokai.
Correct.
Can you explain that?
Yep, so we have partnered with Foodland, and we've partnered with KTA, as well as Time Supermarket. So we identified what supermarkets were most accessible to our beneficiaries. The only islands without a big chain store is Molokai and Lanai. So for those two communities, we are issuing them the three hundred fifty dollars cash.
Okay. Is the council doing HRP verification as well?
We are...
Is that still leaning on OHA?
It's still OHA, but we are collecting the necessary documents. So we have worked with the Hawaiian Registry Team to be clear on what is required to get an approved Hawaiian registry card. We're collecting those documents and handing it over to OHA so they can issue the cards.
So OHA is still processing the HRP cards?
Yes, that's correct. Processing and...
Because one of the requirements, and I walked through the Hawaiian Council's application page on Monday to help one of my aunts, who needed to submit her information, was that HRP number that is either provided in an email, once your successful application is processed, or the physical card is sent to the recipient. But the number is important for the council's
Correct.
eligibility criteria, before you even get to the other portions of your application, you have to have that HRP number.
Correct. And I believe there is counterparts in our office and OHA as well to get those numbers if they don't have it. So we're working to find ways to simplify it for applicants.
Okay.
So if they don't know their number, which most of us don't know our Hawaiian registry number, we could just work with OHA to get it so that they have the information they need to successfully apply.
Okay. I know we have questions. Chair, Merida?
Thank you. I just want to clarify that an applicant does not have to have an HRP card, as long as they have a birth certificate.
That, for the purposes of applying for the program, correct. We'll just collect the necessary documents that verify their Hawaiian ancestry, which is along the lines of what OHA requires for their Hawaiian registry program, and then we'll pass it over to OHA, and OHA will issue the verification. They don't have to have it upon registration, they just need to verify their Hawaiian ancestry with us.
That's, I just wanted to make that clear, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Kohio, any, I know there are applicants that have applied who are not deemed eligible because they have dependents, or those that, are you seeing, what would be the percentage that are clearly not eligible because of the requirements of the program?
There are a number that are applying that, what we've done is anybody that appears to not qualify, we've just put them on the side. We want to make a touch with them before we fully disqualify them. So, but we are seeing a lot of applicants that have dependents that we're hoping this program could provide for them. It's clear on the application and on the website that they wouldn't qualify, but they're still, many of them are still applying. I will say that, you know, we're also activating different means of communicating. So it's not just phone calls, we also have text software available, so we're getting a lot of texts, like hundreds of texts. So we're responding to them through text messaging, through our emails, and that is a constant question that's coming up is, you know, I need help, I have a family, you know. So it might be something the board want to consider in the future, but as of right now, I think we have plenty of applicants that meet the criteria that just need to get processed.
Okay. Well, I mean, the board always, you know, reserves the right to adjust the program based on feedback you're getting, especially as we get into like the end of Week One, Week Two, we've seen the pace of the distributions. You know, obviously, the federal government reopened this morning. That's gonna take some time. You don't close the federal government down for forty-one days and just turn the lights back on and everything goes back to normal. So it's gonna take time for the government to stand back up again, which is why I think our relief aid is important. And one of the questions I got asked this morning was, does that mean now the government's open, OHA's gonna shut the program down? And my answer was no, we are not shutting the program down. We have committed this to our beneficiaries, and we're getting feedback from the Hawaiian Council, and as of right now, we're continuing the process of distributing funds.
Yeah. I just wanted to add too, I think, you know, I recognize, having worked at OHA, one of the biggest challenges is making sure beneficiaries know that this is OHA resources. So throughout all of our branding, the website, the application, it is seen as an OHA program that we are just supporting OHA to administrate.
Trustee Alapa.
I have a question regarding the cash. How are we managing that? Are we giving out envelopes filled with cash? And we have a line out the door, and here you get three hundred fifty, you get three, how does that work?
It's all through checks. So they get mailed a check in the mail. That might be a potential challenge too, is that not all of them have physical residence. So we're working through that to figure it out. So there might be some handing out of checks at some point, but right now, we're mailing, everyone gets a check in the mail, or a gift card in the mail with a letter.
Yeah, and that's a great question, especially Trustee Alapa from Molokai. Can you speak to the challenges of Molokai? I know you said maybe we might have to have boots-on-the-ground support there, maybe out of the OHA office.
Yeah, we just talked about this this morning, but we do know that a large amount of beneficiaries are on SNAP benefits on Molokai. Access to internet, access to understand, there's a lot of kupuna who just need more one-on-one assistance or just more high-touch. So we are looking at deploying a team to Molokai in the near future.
And, you know, one of the things, trustee, you know, I'm thinking, what is federal government-related on Molokai? Obviously, the Department of Interior and Kalau Papa have federal employees there, likely of native Hawaiian ancestry, and they would qualify for the program. So part of it is also ensuring that they are aware that even though the government has reopened, that this is still there for them. I don't know if you have any...
Obviously, it's important for the communication of OHA and in collaboration with Native Hawaiian Council. So important that we get the word out, because there, also have to remember, not everybody has access to a computer, phones, and so forth. So it's gonna be the old, don't go down the trail, kalau papa, and go talk to them, I don't know. But there are other ways that we have to figure out, how do we get the word out to these people, to our people, so they know that they're not forgotten. And I just hope that we're able to implement that immediately, so, you know, they can continue in a normal way every day, life.
So I did, when we talked this morning with Kau, we were looking at, as soon as next week, early next week, getting some boots on the ground on Molokai. Maui, we already have our resource centers, we plan to extend that as a service of kakou Maui. So I think Maui and Molokai will get some access first, but we do have, we are looking at plans to get some boots on the ground to extend the service.
We, well, thank you so much for that. We have an office that's open, of course, to serve, so please let us know, you come on in, and we'll be there to help in any possible way.
Yes, mahalo, we plan to hopefully work out of the OHA office.
Trustees, any other questions? Trustee Akaka?
Mahalo for all the work that you folks have done with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs thus far. It's really heartwarming to hear of the progress that is continuously moving in this partnership. And I wanted to ask regarding any feedback or testimonies that you're receiving, is that being documented? Or is that being gathered so that we might be able to share on this for those that are interested?
For sure, the text messages are being tracked, phone calls, maybe Kau, you can speak to that, I'm not as familiar, like how that, notes, maybe?
Yep, yep, so we can totally put together... Thank you, mahalo. So we can totally put together a report and track all of the different comments that are coming through. Some of the ones that I've seen with my team so far has been, one's been, well, there was one caller that called in and said that he's been laid off for thirty-four days now. Six people in his household, he's the sole provider there, and he's comparing it to a shutdown that he previously experienced in the past, and how it's really challenging for him and his ohana. We've also fielded questions like, is this the only type of check that we're gonna get? Can I get a second paycheck? Because I've already missed two pay periods, it looks like I'm gonna miss another one, so not sure on how we're gonna prepare. And then a lot of appreciation. Mahalo, OHA, and you guys, being Hawaiian Council. Thank you so much for all of that, all of you folks do. A lot of, lot of aloha.
So trustee, what we could do, happy to do, is to summarize some of the mana'o that's coming in, so trustees have information and can adjust where you feel is necessary. So we could provide that, maybe we'll get some good data by next week and send it over.
Mahalo, I think that, and along with some of the data that you had shared in terms of how many have been reached, and how many have reached out, and how many have been served thus far, I think it's really great to be able to highlight on that, and so that those that are interested, and some that might be kind of hila-hila to participate, they might feel more open to know that the service is available to them. And I also wanted to highlight the part in which you've said that, given your experience with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, at any, at every point in this, this interaction, that the Office of Hawaiian Affairs is highlighted. As you know, too often times, the way that the koku is structured, the mission, the name, and all that Office of Hawaiian Affairs is doing gets lost along the way. So I really appreciate that you folks are making that a point to put at the forefront of the interactions.
Yes, we are making sure this is OHA's program and that we are supporting. We are also cross-posting with OHA, but, yeah, cross-posting, so anything that is shared out is shared on our two channels. So we're helping build content for your media team as well to promote the program. So it is very much an OHA program, and I'm very aware of the situation. So we'll make sure that our beneficiaries know that as well.
Thank you. Is it also being noted, if there are those that would be open to sharing their experience, that is then noted so that they can be contacted in the near future to share, whether it be on social media, or if there's any further coverage on this?
Absolutely. So part of the disclaimer is that this information is going to OHA, and that OHA has the ability to reach out to beneficiaries for comments. So it's very much allowable for us to share their information and for interviews.
Mahalo.
You know, I'd also add, so the Office of Personal Management in Washington, D.C. put out a memo last night after the President signed the legislation to reopen the federal government, and the guidance is that, you know, all federal employees are gonna be receiving back pay. There's no date to when they can expect that. The only language in the memo says retroactive pay is provided as soon as possible. So to your point, the federal employee who has not received any pay for the last thirty-six days and has a family can take advantage of the twelve-hundred-dollar cash emergency relief aid that we're providing. And hopefully, they're well aware of that, as well as the many other. We estimate anywhere between three to five thousand federal civil employees of native Hawaiian ancestry throughout the workforce. And so we provide it up to a thousand, is what our current plan is, depending on how the landscape changes, that those numbers could change too. But how many have we gotten out in federal civilian government twelve-hundred-dollar checks?
So we have received one thousand fifty-eight applications, eighty-two have been approved.
Okay, and approved means in the mail?
Already on its way out, if not already received, correct. We started mailing checks as early as Tuesday, so some of them may have been received already.
And to your point, Trustee Akaka, well, you know, one beneficiary story that our office received was a beneficiary of native Hawaiian ancestry dependent, qualified for our program, receives a hundred and sixty-six dollars a month on their EBT card by the federal government for SNAP. One sixty-six, that's it. We know it takes anywhere between five to seven hundred dollars a month just to live and have food to survive in Hawaii, based on the cost of living and what it takes to survive here in Hawaii. So one sixty-six obviously doesn't cover that. On October thirty-first, that beneficiary had eight cents on their EBT card, that's all they had, eight cents, through the Governor's Relief Aid Program. And also, that short, narrow window last Friday, when the government authorized the EBT cards to be loaded, only to be reversed by the Supreme Court later that afternoon, DHS loaded everyone's EBT cards. So this individual received the two fifty from the Governor's Relief Aid Program and their one sixty-six. So on their debit card, their EBT card was four hundred and sixteen dollars and eight cents. They are eligible for our program, and they'll be receiving, if not received already, a three hundred and fifty-dollar gift card to KTA, because this beneficiary lives in Hilo. And so for the month of November, they will have seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and eight cents. And it'll be a Thanksgiving for them, that they'll be able to enjoy and not have to worry, thanks to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, thanks to the Hawaiian Council, the Governor's Relief Aid Program, and all the hard-working people behind the scenes who have made this happen. So that's one story of how we have affected one life and one native Hawaiian beneficiary in our islands. And finally, I just want to thank Kohio and his team, who have worked really, really hard with the OHA team, and many of you are here in this room, up late at night, finalizing contracts and signing signatures and doing whatever it took to make this happen. This collaborative effort between the Council, Hawaiian Council, and OHA is fantastic, and we look forward to working with you and partnering with you on more things in the future.
Mahalo, Chair.
Trustees, any more questions? If not, thank you so much to the Hawaiian Council.
Chair, I have just one more question.
Chair, Merida, go ahead, yep.
I was just questioning whether Kalau Papa is part of Maui County.
Technically, it's the county of Kalaua.
Yeah, yeah.
At least until the last surviving patient, you know, halas. And then, who knows what the future of Kalau Papa will be? But we know its significance to our people and the native Hawaiian community, and so we'll see. Yeah, thank you. All right, thank you so much. Mahalo noe, OHA. Thanks, Kishon. All right, trustees, let's get to work. All right, first thing is new business. This is a fun part of our agenda today, where we have an opportunity to announce our Alakai Award recipients for the period July, August, and September of two thousand and twenty-five. As you well know, the Alakai Program was started earlier this year, and it is a program where the Board of Trustees recognizes individuals here at OHA who are committed to the mission of OHA and who embody OHA's values every day in how they act, lead, and make decisions. The program honors exemplary employees and supervisors. So this quarter's Alakai Award will honor an outstanding employee and an outstanding supervisor here at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. These are peer-nominated from your own coworkers, and it is, you know, an honor for us to announce this quarter's recipients. And we're gonna start with the supervisor first, and that will be read by trustee Galutaria. So Chair would now recognize trustee Galutaria to announce the Alakai Award winner for the category of supervisor.
Mahalo, Chair. We're very, very pleased to announce that our supervisor and recipient of the Alakai Award is Lori Walker. Lori, please come forward. Now, as Lori makes her way up here, Lori, I will tell you that in preparing this presentation today... Come, come up. Oh, too much lay. Come. Very good. Very good. We're very, very pleased. You know, everyone here who works here at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs is very deserving of an Alakai Award. But in this particular case, we need to give it to our one supervisor this time, okay? Lori, I want to share some information about you.
Okay.
And I wanted to do it, I wanted to commit it to memory, but there's too much to say. So I'm gonna read what we've put together for you, okay? And everybody, what a wonderful, wonderful way to honor someone. Lori has been the steadfast foundation of her paeia, balancing her responsibilities as interim director while continuing to lead the commercial properties program and oversee all kele in the absence of key personnel. Despite the immense scope of her kuliana, she has fostered a culture grounded in laulima, lokahi, lokomai ka'i, and kuliah, values that are deeply reflected in how she mentors, supports, and uplifts her team. Her leadership style is defined by her accessibility, compassion, and dedication to working alongside us every day, modeling both humility and excellence. Through her example, Lori has cultivated not only a productivity, but also a genuine sense of unity and shared purpose with her pae. sense of unity and shared purpose with her paia. Laurie's unwavering commitment to OHA and its mission inspires those around her to embody the organization's values in their work. Her deep sense of responsibility and genuine care for others encourage perseverance and collaboration, while her creative, solutions-oriented approach motivates innovation and continuous improvement. Under her leadership, the land paia has achieved major milestones, from securing millions in project funding and boosting leasing revenues to advancing land acquisition and development initiatives that would typically require entire teams elsewhere. Though both her accomplishments and her character, through both your accomplishments and your character, Laurie, you exemplify what it means to lead with aloha, integrity, and vision. So on behalf of the Board of Trustees and all of your colleagues here at the Office of Foreign Affairs, congratulations, you are our Alakai Award Supervisor. Aloha. Okay, please respect, twenty-five words or less.
Okay. Mahalo, mahalo, mahalo. Um, I looked at my staff, I was like, why are you guys here? And they lied to me. Um, thank you so much. This is not the reason I'm here today, I'm working out of the Hilo office, but yeah, super humbling. Um, I have so much aloha for my team and for this work and for our beneficiaries and for better or for worse for this agency. Um, I've been here for almost ten years, come February, and, um, feel super proud of the work that we do every day, and all of my accomplishments are, are reflection, um, directly of my team and, and the support that we get from all of our, um, programs at OHA. So it's not just me, this is everybody, and I have deep, deep gratitude for, for everyone that is committed to this work. Mahaloonui'.
Mahalo. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do our, uh, Alakai, uh, employee, and then we'll take a short recess so we can take a photo with our Alakai Award winners. And so at this time, uh, Chair, I can now recognize trustee Alapa to announce the Alakai Award winner for the category of outstanding employee.
All right, mahalo, thank you so much, Chair. Um, you know, it's always tough to have to narrow it down to one. I would love to give everyone, uh, and recognize everyone for their hard work, but you will have your time, but, um, today it's about this one particular person, and, um, we'd like to recognize that Employee of the Year as Remy. And, uh, Remy, where's Remy? Come on down, look her, look her. Remy! Congratulations, Remy. And we've got some things to say about you, by the way, so we're going to quickly lay you, and then we're going to share some, um, wonderful, uh, thoughts and true positive tributes about you.
Thank you. Oh, my. I told myself I was never going to sit here.
Okay, well, guess what? You're in the hot seat.
I know.
But a pretty good hot seat. Uh, so let me share some things with you, um, with everyone here. Here, here's some incredible things that I've, I'm going to read for you about, about you. So, Remy, you inspire others through your perseverance, compassion, and of course, of course, your authenticity. Your presence alone uplifts those around you. She, you listen deeply, you offer support without hesitation, and, uh, and also you lead with humor and heart, and I got to say that, um, I, we have one thing in common, we both love to bake, and we like the cupcakes and cookies and cakes and so forth. So she shared a lot of her pictures of what she used to do. Oh, my God, she's an incredible baker, and all the designs that you make, I love all of that. But in addition to all that fun stuff that we share, you also show the, um, in difficult moments, you are resilient, and the ways in which you motivate others to keep them going, uh, reminding everyone that, you know, basically you can achieve, um, whatever you put your mind to, and especially when it comes to lahu and the leadership in which is rooted there, and you exemplify that. Uh, in addition, you, um, also exam, you give demonstrations of your strength and kindness. You also set the tone for positive collaborative work environment, and I've seen that clearly in which you are always there for, um, especially in the board suite, uh, and the way in which you are always there for others and, and giving a lending hand and support, and we greatly appreciate that as well. You embody OHA's core values in all that you do, and through the Kako effort, you offer inclusivity, uh, teamwork, often stepping in to help, as I've mentioned, and also giving credit to others in a collective, um, effort rather than for yourself. You also show the aloha which shines through your respectful compassionate interactions while also, uh, being pono about what is fair and transparent, and of course, the, you're also very reliable. Through kulia, you lead by example, bringing forward creative ideas, promoting efficiency, and of course, inspiring others to achieve excellence. You, um, omao, it's very evident in your steadfast dedication to the lahu'i, showing up every day with purpose and vision, and that I know is true. Um, I witness that, uh, especially when you have so much to share based on your knowledge, what you have, uh, um, brought into OHA since you've been hired, and we greatly appreciate all of that. In addition to supporting your colleagues and offering thoughtful feedback, balancing multiple responsibilities with grace, you continually strengthen the culture and values that define our organization. So everyone put your hands together for Remy Keleho Omalu.
Thank you, guys.
Our Employee of the Season, Year, Quarter, whatever, you just, girl, you rock, okay?
Thank you guys so much. Um, I'm so sorry. I, I've sat here many times to get my trustee prepared, and I've never sat here alone. Um, I'm super nervous, I don't know why, um, but I'm very humbly thankful for all of your kind words and, um, for being a recipient of this, um, award. And, um, just mahalo, 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 mahalo. Thank you guys so much. It's truly a blessing and honor, thank you.
Trustees, if it's okay, we'll take a short recess so we can go outside and take a photo with our, uh, Alakai Award winners for the current quarter. Quick recess.
Oh, wow.
Trustees of the Office of Foreign Affairs, uh, we are now jumping to item B on our agenda, which is a Committee on Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment. Lehu, do we have anyone signed up to speak? We have BAE number twenty-five oh eight. Uh, these are our, um, additional OHA legislative package bills. Anyone sign up to speak on any of these items?
Yes, our, our first speaker is James Maioho.
Okay, James, aloha. And you can, you, you know the drill, James?
I, I recall from yesterday.
Yeah, perfect.
Aloha, good morning.
Aloha.
I am James Maioho. I am, I remain the displaced Kahu of Mauna'ala, but also now a, uh, representing our lobbying firm, Kei'i, Evi, Alakai, uh, for this session anyways, as I continue to work on some of those issues. I was lucky enough to be here yesterday just to watch this package go through, so just a couple, just a couple of quick things about this. I support and, and, and total the legislative package as you're putting it forward, and in particular, uh, bringing forward the, the live fire proposal that would place this issue in front of the voting populace and give all people of a, of a, uh, a voice on that. And with that, I, I would encourage this body to go further and to really make a concerted effort to do everything we can to get this passed. There will be a lot of opposition to this bill, and it will be very organized, and there will be a lot of PR, so on this side of the issue, we need to do the same. And when I am down... And when I am down in front of the ledge this coming session, this is something that I'd be proud to speak on. I think it's a very good piece of work. And I would encourage you to go even further and put out a letter and demand that the governor put a moratorium on lease negotiations until the public and the populace has spoken on this issue and worked its way through session and just put a halt on things. There's, there's plenty of time before the leases expire. We don't need to rush into a negotiation, you know, in the cover of night and quickly without the public being fully informed. Transparency and all bodies are going to be a big thing for me going into this session. So I would encourage all of us to make that demand and at least put it out in public. The only other comment that I will make on the package, and I know that the committee had already voted on it, and I missed that opportunity, is on the burial councils. I appreciate that OHA is trying to do something to break the logjam of the quorum issue that we have with burial councils. But we're not really fixing the issue that prevents quorum from happening. I would, if this measure fails and the burial councils stay in this position going forward, I would encourage you folks to really attack the problem and fix what's wrong with the burial councils. They're not properly empowered. They were designed poorly to begin with. And this big porous huge loophole for inadvertent discoveries and everything that falls in that bucket has to be addressed to really have the burial councils be meaningful, because they're not particularly meaningful right now. There's, there's no, there's no action they can take outside of a recommendation. And if we really want them to be a body that can help Kanaka and help these issues and Evi all over the place, it really needs to be properly designed and properly empowered. And I would urge legislation come forward to that regard sometime in the future. But overall, I support what you're doing with this legislative package, and I just wanted to put that on the record. Mahalo.
Mahalo, James, thank you so much for coming. LeHua, anyone else sign up to speak on this?
Yes, our next speaker is Viki Takamine.
Aloha.
Aloha.
Thank you for coming back.
Thank you.
Freaking visitor to OHA.
Well, you know, two times, you know.
In a month.
Kumu said, "Two times to the dentist don't make you a dentist," right? So, you know, twice a year is not enough.
Well, we welcome your attendance.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm, you know, I love what he said, Mr. Maioho. Thank you so much. I think I'm in support of. I really need us to step forward on the military leases, on our legislative package. It needs to be really empowered. Now, OHA is a voice of our people, and we need to exercise that voice. And, and you folks all need to be, you know, we need to charge forward. You know, I can bring the lahui, and we can all kakao. So I really think that we need, we need you folks to step forward on that, and then we can all just kakao with all of the issues that are, that are at the forefront of this legislative package. So I really want to empower you folks to do that.
We're gonna do it.
Okay, mahalo.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Viki. Mahalo. LeHua, anyone else?
On this item, no.
Okay, all right. Chair now recognizes Chair Galutaria of the BAE Committee.
Thank you, Chair Kaheli. Your Committee on Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment, having met on November 12th, 2025, and after full and free discussion, recommends approval of the following motions to the Board of Trustees. Action Item BAE 25-08. Motion 1, relating to Commercial Aquarium Collection. Approve as part of the 2026 OHA Legislative Package the proposed measure relating to commercial aquarium collection to amend Hawaii revised statutes, Chapter 188 and 189, to ban commercial aquarium extraction and collection activities as provided in Attachment A.
Okay, trustees, do we have any? We have a motion. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Again, this was our legislative package we adopted yesterday, adding three new bills to our ledge package. We are in the interest of time and the upcoming ledge session. We are moving these, quick turning them to today's agenda for final approval. Okay, hearing done, let's adopt these measures. LeHua, roll call.
Trustee Ahune is excused, trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina is excused, trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Mahalo. Trustee Wahe. Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have seven yes votes.
Okay, moving to B, Action 2509.
25, we're not done with 2508 yet.
Oh, you know what? I'm so sorry, yeah, because we just did the first bill. All right, sorry, yeah, Chair Galutera.
Okay, Motion 2, to approve an amendment to Article 11 of the Hawaii State Constitution to prohibit live-fire military training on public trust lands. Chair, we move to approve as part of the 2026 OHA Legislative Package the measure proposing live-fire military training on public trust lands as provided in Attachment C.
Yep, trustees, discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Trustee Ahune is excused, trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina is excused, trustee Alapa.
Yes.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe.
Yes.
Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have seven yes votes.
Okay, Chair Galutera.
Thank you, Chair. The third motion is a move to approve as part of the 2026 OHA Legislative Package the proposed measure related to rent stabilization to amend Hawaii revised statutes, Chapter 521, to establish a statewide limit on annual rent increases as provided in Attachment C.
Trustees, any discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Trustee Ahune is excused, trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina is excused, trustee Alapa. Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe.
Yes.
Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have seven yes votes.
Okay, Trustee Galutera.
Aloha, Chair. This is the final motion for BAE 2508. It authorizes administration to make appropriate technical, ministerial, strategic, or other non-substantive amendments to all approved 2026 legislative package bills as necessary for style, clarity, consistency, and accuracy for the final submission to the legislature. This includes preamble language for framing and editorial purposes as needed, titles of measures for strategic and clarifying reasons, and labeling of the bills for tracking.
Okay, trustees, any discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Trustee Ahune is excused, trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina is excused, trustee Alapa. Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe.
Yes.
Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have seven yes votes.
Okay, Chair Galutera.
Thank you, Chair. Action Item BAE 25-09. The, the motion is to approve OHA support with comments for Maui County Bill 9 and authorize the Kapo Kihi Ku to submit testimony urging passage of the bill without exemptions.
Okay, LeHua, do we have any public testimony on 2509, rent stabilization?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Trustees, any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Ahune is excused, trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina is excused, trustee Alapa. Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe.
Yes.
Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have seven yes votes.
Okay, that completes the action for the Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment Committee. We're now going to move on to the Committee on Budget and Finance, where we have Action Item 2584. These would be the Ho'ako corsponcerships we did yesterday. LeHua, do we have anyone signed up to speak on any of the BNF items?
Yes, for our first action item under Budget and Finance, 2584, our first speaker would be Healani Sonora Pale.
Okay, aloha, Healani, welcome. Thanks for coming. We missed you yesterday.
I know, I was at a food drop, so.
Oh, well, more important. Fantastic, good. Just, okay, yeah, and you can introduce, but the red button turns it on, you're live on Olele.
Testing, okay.
Okay, perfect.
Aloha. Okay, so aloha, Chair Kaheli and all the members of the board. I'm submitting my support for the OHA sponsorship of the Queen's Court application for financial support for the Onipaa Peace March. I was unable to attend yesterday's meeting because I was at a community food drive, which my department at UH sponsors. But after watching some of the testimonies later, I felt important to set the record straight. I also have attached the timeline of events that has brought us to where we are today. Kalahui Hawaii inspired the Onipaa Peace March in 1993, when we organized the Ike Pono March for Sovereignty. My husband was there, part of the organizing, attended by 40,000 people. Years later, in 2013, the Queen's Court was formed by Kalana Moaeli, who began what was called the Queen Liliu' Okalani Kingdom Restoration Spiritual Walk, later named the Queen Liliu' Okalani Spiritual Walk, and eventually it evolved to the Onipaa Peace March. And that's all in the timeline. The first financial sponsor was the Kauani Foundation, which paid for the bus to Mauna Ala. That was in 2014. In 2015, the Hui Kuli Kekaku joined forces with the Queen's Court. And after that, after attending a few marches, Kalahui Hawaii became a co-organizer and sponsors. I put 2018, but it was actually 2017 we started. And then over the years, the Onipaa Peace March has had several sponsors, including OHA. In 2018, thousands attended the march, which was organized by Kaoka Ohu Vahilani, Kailana Moaeli, myself, Kohi Aluas from OHA, Tricia Watson, and Walter Ruddy from Aina Momoona. And some of you trustees were there as well. I remember seeing you up at Mauna Ala, trustee Wahe. Over the years, external events like the Mauna Kea movement and COVID-19 pandemic have naturally affected attendance. You know, we went down really low during COVID to a few hundred. Still, since 2013, attendance has continued to grow. My husband and I, along with members of our committee, have been an integral part of the organizing for 10 years, designing shirts, writing and reporting grants, finding fiscal sponsors, organizing educational booths, coordinating schools, arranging music, protocol. And Tiviki Takamine is one of our key protocol leaders in our Onipaa Peace March. We've, we've been working with her for many years. Arranging music, speakers, dozens of people can attest to this, including Paula Alkana, countless volunteers and schools partners. I'm the contact person, all the schools know me. We have flyers, press releases, and email documentation reflecting this extensive work. In December of 2023, Kalahui Hawaii created Mutual Aid Kalahui as our fiscal arm, because we were tired of asking people to be our fiscal sponsor. And after what I witnessed this past year, I decided to dissolve Mutual Aid Kalahui, our committee did. However, the current members said they wanted to continue the organization. And Kalahui Hawaii asked them to do, gave them the nonprofit on the condition that they would change the name, which they have not. I do not want to get into the he said, she said. But I have been at this long enough to know what is pono and what is not. I was tired of dealing with the drama that arises when one or two volunteers begins to believe that the Onipaa Peace March belongs to them. To bring a more structured and inclusive approach, Kalahui Hawaii and I decided to formalize an Onipaa Peace March coalition, which we are open to all groups joining, all groups can join. With a kupuna council, Liko Martin is our head kupuna, and also Kumu Kawai Kapo Okalani Hewitt, advisory group, because the march had simply become too big for one group, or two groups even, to manage alone. Permits are issued on a first-come, first-served basis. And if someone obtains the permit before we do, we must adjust how we organize. Over the years, many people have held the permits. Sometimes permit holders willingly transfer them back, and sometimes they do not. Such as two years ago, when a former member of the Queen's Court applied for the permits and refused to release them, but we went forward anyway. I share this in the spirit of aloha and to provide factual context, especially given the bewilderment I witnessed yesterday watching online regarding what looked like two identical events. So I wanted to give that factual timeline and history, which is all in my head, and in my husband's head too. But, yeah, we were there, present. You have anything else to say?
I also want to say that, you know, the one on the 16th and the reasons like for kind of changing it over, there's a whole bunch of reasons we don't want to even get into. But I think for the most part, you know, you think about the Onipaa, you know, back in 1993, when we, you know, back in 1982, when we did the, you know, the Onipaa March back then, I was kind of shocked at how many Hawaiians didn't even know about the overthrow or even the, you know, what happened in the overthrow. You know, I come from a family that I think were royalists, the Duweshe family on Molokai. And, you know, my great-great-grandfather actually went over with guns and everything kind of to protect the queen, and they got kind of shot down. There's a whole story behind that. But I kind of grew up knowing about these things, about the overthrow, knowing that our queen was put in prison. So I think I just wanted to make a point here that 1993, just the events and everything, was just very moving in so many ways. I knew a lot of it, but I was very shocked at how many Hawaiians didn't know about it. But of course, you know, back then, just in remembering, the media came out. I think the news coverages on every station did a whole weekly series on the overthrow. But the importance for this year on the 16th, all those days, the 17th is very integral. Of course, that's the day that it happened. But there's a series of days that this history took place. The 16th is just as important, I think, as so many things happened even prior to the 17th. But I think for the most part, it's really about to, really for the young people, for our schools, because the schools really took to it. And I think that's when it really grew. And the importance of making sure that our young never forget. I think the "my point" was a term that we used, and we called the event "my point," which is never to forget. And I think when the young comes up, you know, knowing that there were so many Hawaiians that didn't even know back then what kind of really happened. And this is like not very, not that long we think about in terms of history, but how many Hawaiians didn't know about it? And I think, you know, for that, and this year in more particular, you know, coming to the schools is a big participation. They send their elementary school, their middle school, and some of their high school students for many years. And this year, it's just, it's timely, I think, this year for the 16th. Then we needed to do it on a Friday so our kiki can come. And more important to point out is the challenges against our trust, right? The preference policy, I think even that, that's going to be really a highlight for this year. And to give them a venue to come and walk and think about historically why we're in the situation that we're in is very important. And I just want to share that a little bit about the 16th, while we're doing it on the 16th. And that it is bigger than all of us, I think. So I just wanted to share that. And of course, the whole issue, you know, we don't want to do a public fight, because there's a lot of things that went down that is not deserving of the public seeing. And I think that, you know, if you guys want to talk about stuff later, we definitely are here to talk about it. But we just don't want to air it, because it's hila hila at some point. And I think we just need to remember the kids are watching as well.
Well, thank you for coming and for providing some context. Okay, mahalo.
And we're not telling you how to spend your money.
We're happy to support, we're happy to participate. Thank you. Anyone else? No, okay. Yeah, Chair.
Chairman.
Wahe.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move to approve and authorize FY 2026 sponsorship funding to the Queen's Court for the Onipaa Peace March 2026 event on January 16, 2026, in the amount of $15,000.
Okay, trustees, any discussion? Well, roll call, please.
Trustee Ahune is excused, trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina is excused, trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Souza. Trustee Wahe.
Aye.
Yes.
Mahalo. And Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have seven yes votes.
We did, but I think, we'll go check. I think the way it was agendized, even though we did increase it, is, yeah. We'll bring them up, yeah. Okay, we're moving on to the next item, which is 2585. Yeah, Chair Wahe.
Is there anyone?
Anyone sign up to testify on 2585?
There's no one signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you, LeHua.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve and authorize FY 2026 sponsorship funding to Mutual Aid Kalahui for the 2026 Onipaa Peace March event on January 17, 2026, in the amount of $11,250.
Trustees, any discussion? Okay, roll call.
trustee Ahuna is excused.
Is excused.
Aye.
Trustee Akina is excused, trustee Alapa.
Yes.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Suzha.
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Yes.
And Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have seven yes votes. There's no one signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, Chair, nice chair, my name is.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve this major budget adjustment to reallocate seventy-eight thousand dollars to the resource management financial assets paia by realigning funds from personnel to professional services.
trustee Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina is excused, trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Suzha.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Yes.
And Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, which is actually on twenty-five dash one hundred. This is, uh, for, uh, realignment for FY twenty-four and twenty-five. Anyone sign up to speak on this?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, Chair Wahe'e.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve the Fiscal Bionium Budget Realignment Number Five. Core and non-core budget for the Fiscal Bionium periods twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, summarized at Attachment Number One.
Okay, trustees, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
trustee Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina is excused, trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Suzha.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Yes.
And Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
Seven, you have seven yes votes.
Okay, final item on the BNF agenda is going to be twenty-five fifty-two. This is, um, the Kana'aho Maui wildfire relief disaster aid grant to all its beneficiaries. Anyone sign up to speak on this?
There is no one signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, Chair Wahe'e.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to amend the prior action of BF twenty-five fifty-two to approve that the previous carryover of remaining Kana'aho grant funds for Maui island wildfire disaster aid be distributed as an additional payment of one thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars to be available to the seven hundred and thirteen homeowner and renter recipients of Kana'aho grants as approved from the original five million dollar allocation under BOT twenty-three oh seven and reaffirmed under BF, BF, uh, twenty-five fifty-two motion B.
Trustees, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
trustee Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina is excused, trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Suzha.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Yes.
Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have seven yes votes.
Okay, thank you, Chair Wahe'e. Next, uh, agenda item is going to be recognizing the Committee on Investment and Land Management. We have Chair Suzha here with us. Lehu, do you have anyone signed up to speak on the first item, which is twenty-five twelve? This is our approval, final approval of OHA's investment policy for our legacy lands.
There is no one signed up to speak on this first item.
Okay, Chair now recognizes, Chair Suzha. First item, twenty-five twelve.
Right, mahalo, Mr. Chair. Uh, I move to approve the OHA investment policy for legacy lands set forth in Attachment A of Action Item ILM number twenty-five twelve, and I'm clarifying the recommended action from my committee.
Okay, trustees, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
trustee Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina is excused, trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Suzha.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Yes.
And Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have seven yes votes.
Okay, next item is twenty-five thirteen. This is going to be final approval of OHA's management policy for legacy lands, management policy. Anyone sign up to speak on this?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, Chair Suzha.
Mahalo, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move to approve the OHA management policy for legacy lands that set forth in Attachment A of Action Item ILM twenty-five thirteen. And again, I'm clarifying the recommended action from my committee.
Trustees, discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
trustee Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Akina is excused, trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Suzha.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Yes.
And Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have seven yes votes.
Okay, next item is item number ILM twenty-five fourteen. This is final approval of OHA's management policy for its investment lands, investment lands. Anyone sign up to speak on this?
There's no one signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, Chair Suzha.
Mahalo, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move to approve the OHA management policy for investment lands that set forth in Attachment A of Action Item ILM number twenty-five dash fourteen. And again, also on this item, I'm clarifying the recommended action from my committee. Mahalo.
Okay, trustees, any discussion on twenty-five fourteen? Hearing none, roll call.
trustee Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka. Trustee Akina is excused, trustee Alapa. Trustee Galutaria. Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Suzha.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Yes.
And Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have seven yes votes.
Okay, great. It, you know, before moving on to twenty-five fifteen, I just want to mahalo Chair Suzha and, and the rest of the board for your work and leadership on these, uh, land management plans, both our investment and legacy lands. We have a now adopted strategic plan. We have tactical plans, business plans, management plans, and, and we have clear guidance and policy now on how we manage the thousands of acres of land under OHA's inventory. So, great job. Chair Suzha.
Mahalo, Chair.
Okay, moving on to ILM twenty-five fifteen. This is approval for OHA to enter into negotiations with the Department of Hawaiian Homelands pertaining to development of its Lot I in Kaka'ako Makai. Anyone sign up to speak on this item?
There is no one signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, Chair Suzha.
Hi, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move to approve for OHA to enter into negotiations with the Department of Hawaiian Homelands, DHHL pertaining to development of Kaka'ako Makai Lot I Oahu TMK number one-two-dash-one-dash-zero-one-five-zero-six-one.
Okay, trustees, any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Chair Su, Chair Wahe'e.
Um, I'd like to amend the motion to add the following to the end of that, to the end of that motion. Um, so it would say with, it, it would have that exact motion, and then it would say with a residential mixed-use project and authorize DHHL access to the property subject to terms to be negotiated in order to perform site due diligence related to its future development.
Okay, trustees, we have an amendment on the original action. Anyone, uh, Chair Suzha, you want to speak at all to this amendment? It's very self-explanatory.
Yep, I support it, Chair.
Okay, trustees, any discussion on this amendment? It looks like it just, uh, clearly and explicitly specifies the residential mixed-use project uh, between OHA and DHHL. Uh, those terms still need to be negotiated at a future date. Uh, but it, it does allow both agencies to move forward with due diligence related to potential future development. Any discussion? Hearing, okay, hearing none. Let's, uh, vote on the amendment. Roll call.
trustee Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka. Trustee Akina is excused, trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Suzha.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Yes.
Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have seven yes votes on the amendment.
Trustee Wahe'e.
I, I just want to clarify that because that, um, amendment passed, what, what we're voting on now is, is what is on the screen.
Okay.
Um, there.
So you know what? I'll recognize Chair Suzha to read the final action for this amended, um, item.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Chair. I move to approve for OHA to enter into negotiations with the Department of Hawaiian Homelands pertaining to the development of Kaka'ako Makai Lot I Oahu TMK number one-two-one-zero-one-five-zero-six-one uh, with a residential mixed-use project and authorized DHHL access to the property subject to terms to be negotiated in order to perform site due diligence related to its future development.
Okay, trustees, any discussion? Final vote, twenty-five fifteen, roll call.
trustee Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka.
I just want to get some clarity in the difference between this and the previous. Vote to amend, and this is to adopt the amended version. Aye, mahalo.
trustee Akina is excused, trustee Alapa.
Yes.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Suzha.
Yes.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Yes.
Chair Kaheli, you have seven yes votes.
Okay, we have one more item on the agenda. This is concerning Kahana Valley. This is ILM number twenty-five oh four. Do you have anyone signed up to speak on this action item?
Yes, our first speaker is May Au.
Okay, welcome. Thanks, Kishon. Aloha, welcome, welcome. We have Mr. Nathaniel as well.
I consider myself the senior kupuna of Kahana.
Help her with the microphone, Kishon.
I'm so grateful.
Help with the microphone.
Oh.
So, uh, how many testifies we have on Kahana?
Oh, okay.
And the second one would be?
All right.
Mr. Nathaniel.
Okay, we're going by age over here, okay? This is Auntie May Au, Kupuna May Au, and then Dr. Jim Anthony, and then myself.
Yes.
I'm third in line.
Yes, and I acquired the Kahana land through Hati Nui, my husband's mama. So I'm so grateful, and I, that's a precious jewel to me. Kahana is precious, and I'm still looking for mo'opuna that would love the land as much as I do. Yes, so the lease is still in my name, yes. And of course, I'm ninety-five now. I'm not going to live forever, but I'm still searching along with my mo'opuna who will love Kahana and take care of it as much as I care for it, so, yeah. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to testify.
You're welcome. I know we have, uh, Dr. Anthony here as well, so we're just going to take everyone. We have one person online and the three of you. Oh, we have six?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll go with Dr. Anthony next.
Okay.
Okay.
Dr. Anthony, you recognize.
I'm Jim Anthony. I'm a party to ninety-three year, uh, no, sixty-five year terminal lease, as are twenty-eight of the lessies under the same, terms of the same lease that was entered into in nineteen ninety-three, terminates in twenty fifty-eight. I am not really quite sure why we are here today. Um, because the agenda item is, doesn't provide me with hard copy material as to where the, this board is with respect to what action you are contemplating taking with respect to Kahana. I'm not even sure whether it is the intention of this board of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs to continue with its efforts which ended in my experience about a year ago, um, when there were some initial representations made to the community about the possibility of OHA taking over a management of Kahana. Against that background, if it is still the intention of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs to seek um, custodial representation, that is, to seek quote-unquote ownership of Kahana, which is the entire Aho'apua, which is acquired under condemnation proceedings way back nineteen sixty-seven, thereabouts, is five thousand, two hundred and ninety acres, roughly. And of that, the twenty-eight leases constitutes a mere twenty acres, and they're terminal leases now. We have been trying to get a discussion going with DLNR to assert our rights under HRS five-one-six, Section Two, which says that all leases in the state, when HRS five-one-six was enacted forty years ago, they are subject to condemnation. That includes Kahana. So, on the assumption that OHA is still interested in acquiring Kahana, the position that I have taken in lengthy submissions that I made to your recently departed CEO Stacy Ferrera, there are extensive submissions on the record. And in those submissions, I said, before OHA takes over Kahana, if it is still your intention, then I think you are honor-bound at least, and probably legally bound, because this land was acquired for specific purposes under, under condemnation proceedings. You should at least make our lives, bring some kind of certainty and closure to our lives as twenty-eight lessies. And the six who are residents without any papers, there's a long history to that. Mr. Chair, it's not my intention to bore you with the entirety of my experience of twenty-five years on, on Kahana. But if you are intending to do that, that is to take Kahana over from the state, I think your first responsibility is both a political responsibility, it's a social responsibility, it's a legal responsibility for you to follow the terms of the law, in this case, HRS five-one-six. And to address the question of what you're going to do about our lessie standard, about our lessies, about our leases, um, one shoe is not going to fit all. There are people, uh, about seventy percent of the lessies who are in violation of their leases. You need to deal with those twenty-one lessies in a way that is humane, that is sensible, that is in keeping with the spirit of HRS five-one-six and its substance. You can give them extended leases, and with the seven who are in full compliance with the leases, that includes us. Uh, I can tell you outright now, and I'm, and my, my style is to, is to engage in truth-telling when I appear in public. And that is to say, that give us an opportunity to buy. There are provisions built into the legislation where the state has a legal obligation to provide with us with funds. We don't have the money to buy. All the, all of the assets that we have, personal assets, are invested in a home that we built seventeen years ago. All of it. And what we are concerned about is what motivated HRS five-one-six in the first instance under the Democratic Party, which still rules Hawaii. And that is that the lease system that the state owed it to the citizens of this state, that their lives should be, their economic lives should be protected. With our family just speaking about our ohana, we are literally sitting on economic death row, literally. And because the question we pose to ourselves is this. If this lease expires, I'm going to be dead by then, no question. I'm ninety-one now. My wife, who is of Samoan ancestry, is seventy-four. She's not going to be around thirty years from now. You know, one of the reasons why HRS five-one-six was enacted, what, forty, fifty years ago, is to give people, to protect people's intergenerational equity. We, our ohana, we have the only cultural living park, standalone cultural living park. We grow kalo. We have planted trees that are forty years into the future, pumuli trees, some of which we just cut in order to build a palaeo on the, on, on the property where we live and so on. So, if you're going to proceed with trying to get your hands on Kahana, please solve the problems of the lessies who are there.
Okay, let's stop right there.
Okay.
We're going to recognize Chair Suzha to explain what we're doing.
Okay.
Yep.
Aloha, Dr. Anthony. Great to see you guys. Um, just to give you, uh, some context as to why you're here today. Um, the initial motion to engage in, uh, possible land transfer with the state of Hawaii, basically, in so many ways, removing DLNR from the equation, inserting OHA. In whatever capacity that may be, we don't know. We did, however, conduct some due diligence. And as of yesterday's committee meeting, And as of yesterday's committee meeting, we, I believe it is the will of the board to not continue on with any more due diligence. However, we will ratify, potentially ratify that here today.
No more due diligence?
Correct.
Okay.
That is what the action.
What lies beyond due diligence?
I cannot speak to that yet. There's, there's, there will be no more, I guess, engagement from OHA's side.
To what?
If that's what the board decides here today.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Thank you for the clarifications, yeah.
And we took that action in committee yesterday and today's action is to ratify that. It is not to say that, you know, OHA would not have wanted to be a partner in it with the state, but through the initial due diligence that we did, there were
Okay.
serious concerns that were raised by the board and, and the honest answer is we just do not have the internal capacity to handle and to take on the responsibility and the care and, and respect that Kahana and those that live there and call this place their home. We don't have the capability today to do that. And so we are putting that on hold and pause and moving on.
Okay, so it's on hold?
Yes.
All right, okay. I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you so much, yes. All right, Lewa, I'm sorry.
Can I continue?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, being brought up to date, this meeting was supposed to be the second phase of due diligence, right? That's what it says here. Okay, so now you, you made a decision that we're not going to do due diligence anymore, right? Okay. So, you know, when we started all this, it was actually Governor Green that had approached the Office of Hawaiian Affairs to do just that. About time they started spending some money to take care of our people. And Kahana was one of them, Milili'i was another, Maunala'ha was another, and some of those other areas that was affected by state takeover. So I just want to share that, that, you know, for all the years that the Office of Hawaiian Affairs have been in operation, all this, all this hakaka that goes on all the time, got to stop. Because our people out there are the ones that are really affected. We need the help. You know, right now, the state has done nothing. Kurt Cattrell has retired. I don't know who's taking his place. But I think that once it became possible, that OHA might be interested, you know. It just took all of us aback. We had to think about it, receive you folks, you know, went to some of the meetings and what have you, expressed our concerns. And we still think that, don't just drop us. I think we should still keep, keep this conversation going so that the state knows that we do have an organization for native Hawaiians that are backing us. Otherwise, you know, we're in, we're in the same predicament again. Dr. Anthony brought up about our lessees being in, in arrears and stuff like that, it has to be. I've had lots of talks with Chairman Don, Don Chang about doing that. And I said to OHA from the beginning, don't touch OHA, I mean, OHA, don't touch us until the land board takes care of their responsibility. Take care of all the leases, bring them up to par. But I can tell you, Chairman Kai Kahili, that when you got installed and I went to the installation, we had Union Church, boy, you were really, really positive of, from the mountain all the way out to the ocean, the whole Ahupua'a. And, and, you know, I was taken aback by it. And so I just want you to know that. I took it very, very seriously. Went home and tried to call as many of our members as possible. And for today to say, well, OHA is not in a position to do any of that. Well, we all got to clean house somewhere, you know, and so we understand. And so we've got two more. We've got two more here that might want to share a little bit. They came all the way from Kahana. I don't know if you will have time for it, but.
Well, and I would say, because you mentioned Milili'i.
Yeah.
Milili'i is on that list as well.
Yes.
And, and they are looking for.
And Milili'i is all my family on the Kaua'ha line.
They're all looking for solutions as well.
Of course.
Their leases very similar to the leases at Kahana, similar to leases in Puna across from Nanavale that were descendants in Kalapana when the lava flow in the mid nineteen eighties covered those lands. They were relocated up by Nanavale estate. So the state has similar issues like this. And I'm not saying OHA cannot be a partner in that in the future. Your lease expires in the twenty-fifties, right? This is twenty-twenty-five. I think there may be a different time when OHA could be an active participant. It's just, right now, we don't have the capacity and it's important for us to take this and make this decision because our staff work and dedicate their time and resources based on the, the board's decisions. And by taking this decision today, it allows them to redirect their resources to other areas that are more priority. Not to mean your issue is not important. We can take it up at a different time.
Well.
I'd like to make a quick pitch, not so much on the record, but between us as human beings. A quick pitch for some private discussions in the meantime so that we can do what JFK once said, come let us reason together. Because this is a matter that affects our lives in terms of intergenerational equity. And in the state of uncertainty that we have now, it is very corrosive of our lives. The uncertainty is very corrosive. So, creative bureaucracy, I appeal to you. The last time I appealed to you, where you were on the, you were chair of the Land and Water Board of the of the House. And you've gotten younger. I've gotten older. And so, you know, it's the older person speaking to the younger person saying, please help us. If you can, if we can contrive some discussions between yourselves, creative bureaucracy, DLNR, that would be a way forward. It would be a good thing to do. Yeah, I'll leave it there.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have three more in person and two online. Our next speaker is Laolani Teal.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
For those that didn't have to speak, now that you understand what the issue is.
Yeah, we still want to know.
Still want to survive. I'll make sure the board, your board is all.
Our next.
Laolani. Who's older? Where were you? Hello, Chair. My name is Jason. That was my mom. Okay. That was my mom that spoke earlier. I'll say something really short. I was born, raised in Kahana. I was there when the state condemned the whole valley. And the only reason being because the state wanted the water. Because my tutu was one of the last remaining six landowners there. So the state condemned the whole valley because they couldn't circumvent paying my tutu and the, because that was the, our kuliana lands. So, upon the condemning of the, of the valley, and even though they created this so-called living park, the concept never flew, never left the ground. But other than that, I feel that so far as what the state has collected in revenues and what they've done and not done in the valley is so shameful. But that, I feel that the valley should be given back to OHA, to Hawaiian Homes land, which I am a native Hawaiian. I'm part of the canoe builders, the friends of Hokulea and Hawaii Loa. I helped build these voyaging canoes. And while my dad was still alive, resided in Kahana Valley. And so anyway, my feelings is that, that the state shouldn't even, should not even be paid for the land, for the valley. They've already stolen all what they could out of it and not being taken care of. So I leave it in your hands to find a way. And then even for, for, to manage the prop, you know, the valley, there's so many different native Hawaiians that are qualified and partly including myself and some of my relatives that still reside there. We take care, we've been on the land forever. And so, I put it in your hands. Find a way. There's a way. There's a will. There's a way. I've said what I said. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Aloha, mahalo, mahalo. My name is Laolani Teal and I'm part of one of the families of Kahana. And I'm also, I've also done a lot of peace work and community, um, community work with, you know, in the past with the community. So, I just want to make a few points that I think are really important to understand. I, I want to say that I think, I think that you should possibly reconsider your decision. I do understand that there, the capacity of staff is absolutely important. I'm just, I'm asking you not to take this matter off of the table entirely. And the reason for that is that in my experience in Kahana, both as a family member and as a community worker, instability of the, the fundamental issues that were raised by the kupuna here is is the central point that needs to be resolved in order to make Kahana the most wonderful, awesome Ahupua'a that we have. And I, I will say that on the island of Oahu, Kahana Valley is the one truly functional, despite all of the things that the, the community has faced internally and externally. Kahana Valley is our one truly functional Ahupua'a where fishermen still trade with kalo farmers, where everybody pitches in to work, where when the bulldozers came to tear down people's houses, the, the entire community, including people who did not even like those people, but were connected to them, stood on the road at five o'clock in the morning before the sun came out in the dark, kupuna and keke and all of the people and brought their cars and blockaded and would not allow those bulldozers from the Department of Land and Natural Resources to continue. So, I think that that kind of Ahupua'a, people who stand up for each other, people who trade with each other, people who go to meeting after meeting, even when it's difficult to work things out, they need protection and they need support. You know, they're, as far as I know, they're still paying taxes. Incredibly high property taxes, these and, and other things. And they're required to work for the state every month. You know, they, they have a very difficult situation. And Dr. Anthony is correct too, that there's not a one-size-fits-all situation, a solution that can work for everybody. But the, the overall picture of working with that community is a very, very doable one. We're talking about twenty-one families. We're talking about a precious resource. We're talking about beautiful aina that's actually maintained in actual aloha aina practice every single day by these people here. So I just want to really urge OHA to have their back. Give them that security. That's the, that's something that's lacking in Kahana. Is the security, the stability with that, they can really work together. And I, I want to say also, I want to urge the board to really root for free prior and informed consent, FPIC. It's an international standard that I believe should be absolutely applied here. And unfortunately, I won't be able to stay for the other item on military leases, but I'm going to say that I will, my testimony there would be largely also to, to root for free prior and informed consent being the standard there. You can look it up on the Office of the High Commissioner for Human Rights for the United Nations. And it's been very well implemented in many other countries. And it really should be implemented here and the Office of Hawaiian Affairs should take the lead in advocating for it. So, mahalo nui loa.
Mahalo nui loa. Okay, last testifier you recognize.
Aloha, Ben Schiffer, Mr. Chair and members of trustees. I support what they are saying. We have the Kayapa family, we have the Bernie family, we have the Grai family, and we have the Anthony family over here. I support what they are saying. At the same time, I understand that the finances have to be in order first, right? You can't do anything without the finances. You can't do anything without the manpower to make sure that those assets are being utilized correctly. And so you have to do your job, due diligence, to make sure that, that you are being a trustee in doing that, being a trustee for the, for the funds that you get. So I get that. But I, I just wanted to add that, like Milili'i, like Maunala'ha, eventually, we want to make sure that they are all included in this. If Hawaiian Homes is not going to step up, we want another Hawaiian organization to step up and say, they're going to be part of our group and help them work out. I think the communities need to work out their issues. And then when they're finished, then bring it up to you folks so that, you know, you have something to work with, right? Right now, we're only going all over the place, but we're still trying to work on it. And so, you, you know, it was, it was a light that came on. We, we grabbed onto it. And, and, you know, it's going to fade a little bit, I get it. But hopefully, in the background, we will be still working on all of those places where all Hawaiians live, right? Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Mahalo nui loa. Lewa, you said there are online?
We have two people online. The first speaker, Kahia Wallace.
Okay.
Hi, aloha nui kakou.
Aloha.
Aloha, kia, Kahia Wallace, no Oahu, Kaulauloa, Kahana. I just want to, mahalo you folks for the opportunity to speak. And since we already know what's going to happen, I do want to share that I hope you folks remember us in your na'o for future future discussion in land transference. And I know you will because at the convention for Hawaiian civic clubs, there was a resolution that was brought up for publicly owned lokoia. And so keep in mind that we are stewards of hui lua lokoia here in Kaulauloa. And as I share at every hui malama lokoia that we attend, that the health of our lokoia reflects the health of our communities, but also our waterways. And so I know that you folks know that it requires our moka resources for our fisheries down below to thrive. And so from Po'au'au, our highest peak, and Po'au Makua, all the way to Kalehualoa, this right here is our va'va'i. And all the things that can happen for kanaka o'evi period and the amount of food that can come from this valley, I mean, it can be what our kupuna have it to be. And so I also want to acknowledge all the kupuna that shared their manao earlier. And mahalo nui you folks for providing this opportunity. And so, I kakou the transfer. I look forward to us meeting again. And anytime we hear transfer, I know you will think of Kahana. Because ma'ane i kakou, no la'ila mahalo nui kakou, no kia hui ana, pome ka'ia okou. Aloha.
Aloha. Thank you so much. Next testifier.
Our last speaker is Olivia Wallace.
Olivia Wallace.
Hi, aloha nui. Can you guys hear me? Sorry, I'm on the road here. I just pulled over. So I want to make sure.
Yes, we can. Yes, we can do it.
Okay, perfect. Aloha nui kakou, Olivia Wallace. I am a descendant of our kupuna, our tutu van, Daniel Francis Bernie. And Ullani Bernie is present there today, who is my grandma. And Ullani Bernie is present there today, who is my grandma. I also want to recognize my father, Louis Wallace, that I'm a descendant of as well. And the generations of our ohana who have been calling Kahana Valley home. I do wanna recognize that Kahana is not just a place. It is our identity, our kumu and our source of life. The aina has cared for us and is our continued kulianna to care for her in return. Protecting Kahana means protecting our people, our culture, and our values are rooted in who we are as kanaka oeev. Our aina is precious. And once it's taken damage or displaced, we cannot replace that. We have a responsibility to ensure that decisions made about Kahana honor the voices and the rights of our people who live there and to stand from there. The health of our aina and our lokoia are one and in the same. And I'm mahalo Oha for having this on the table for discussion. And I hope that you folks continue to stand with our Kahana families to protect the valley and its people from displacement and to uphold the vision of aloha aina that our kupuna lived by and continues to live by. Sorry, I'm emotional, but I just wanna mahalo you folks again for the opportunity and your continued commitment to protect our aina and our people. And to, also, I hope that you folks will continue to have Kahana on the table and keep us in mind for future discussions as well. And we always appreciate you folks when you guys come out to the valley and connect with our people in person as well. Thank you so much and mahalo for your time.
Thank you so much. Lehua, anyone else?
There is no one else.
Okay, Chair Souza, three D action item. Oh, I'm sorry.
Discussion.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to rescind prior BOT approval, ILM action item number 2504, to undertake due diligence phase two activities of the ahupua'o o Kahana parcels, Kahana Oahu. And accordingly, to discontinue all further due diligence work related to the proposed transfer of ahupua'o o Kahana parcels unless further directed by this Board of Trustees of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs.
Okay, we are now open for discussion. Chair Miranda, Lindsay.
Mahalo. I just wanna say and share with our beneficiaries that we too were excited when we went out there for a site visit and met with all of the kanaka and, and wanted so much to help them. But due diligence means going into the details, what it would mean to Oha to take on such a big kulianna. And, you know, what's most disheartening to me is that the state did not offer us Kahana Valley in fee simple. They offered us the management of Kahana, Kahana Valley through an executive order. So it's not like we could have done anything in there. And this is the same thing with Kaholevi. Till today, we only have a management contract. It's not our island like people think it is. So, and it'll be the same case with Milo Lea. They want us to do the work, but we don't have the ownership for our people. So I just wanted to share that with our beneficiaries so that they know that our hearts were in it when we went down to meet with them. And, and we were very excited about thinking that we could do something so big for our people. And, and ended up, through the due diligence, we found out all kinds of problems that we would have encountered. So I, I wanna say kalama'i au to all the residences.
Mahalo. I wanted to mahalo all that came to testify today and those that testified online and sharing your manao and giving us perspective in terms of what the history of the valley has been for those that have, have the multi-generational experience there. And I, I want you to know that we hear you and that I believe that the advocacy on behalf of you all must still continue in whichever way that we can with the means that we have, the capacity that we have as Office Hawaiian Affairs. That remains clear to me. So I wanna mahalo you again for the perspective that you're giving us. And please continue to share with us and how we can kakao' and collaborate with one another and make better in terms of what has happened thus far on behalf of the state and how the Office Hawaiian Affairs can implement what we can alongside with you to better the conditions there in the valley.
Thanks, Trustee Akaka. Trustees, any more discussion? Trustee Alapa?
Thank you everyone, mahalo everyone for coming out here today. I just want to share the same sentiments with my fellow trustees. You know, I grew up there. When as a little girl, we played in Kahana with Auntie Bernie and her children. And we had all the, the typical growing up of the days and where we spent our time at the beach and the mountains, hiking, all that, and the luas and family events that were held there. And it was really disheartening. As we, we shared, all the, all the information was shared with us yesterday that it really wasn't gonna be in the best use at this time now for Oha to continue to proceed. And as trustee Lindsay had shared, we were not able to take ownership. That's not what our, our goal is. But what the state has put us in is just in a management position, which would put us in a very uncomfortable situation where we're not able to provide the capacity to be able to do the work, to continue our work with Kahana, let alone with all the other entities that we are entertaining right now. But I just wanna say that this is just being put on pause. As long as you guys keep up and let us know what's going on, we're here to help no matter what because we can't allow anything to happen to our people that are, are thriving there, live their lives there. But we'll always be here to support. And let's see what happens down the road. Perhaps another opportunity will come up for us to help in any possible way. But I just wanna let you folks know that we are always gonna be thinking of you. And this is not just to put you to the side and we're done. No, absolutely not. This is gonna continue as long as I possibly here. Mahalo.
Thanks, Trustee Alapa. Okay, trustees, any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's take final action on this action item. Roll call vote for 25, 2504, ILM 2504.
Trustee Ahuna is excused. Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina is excused. Trustee Alapa?
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay? Trustee Souza?
Aye.
Trustee Wahe'e?
Yes.
Chair Kahele?
Aye.
You have seven yes votes.
Okay, thank you, trustees. Trustees, we have three more items on the, actually, two more items on our agenda. One of them is, is very important in regards our final action item in the, from the BAE Committee regarding military lease lands. But before we do that, we have to do action item BOT 2515, which is OHA's insurance policies because they expire the end of this month. And I know the speakers here have a limited amount of time and they have to leave. And so the chair is going to place on the table action item, Board of Trustees, 2515. This is approval of Office of Hawaiian Affairs insurance policy renewals for the period from December 1st, 2025 to December 1st, 2026. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, as we bring up Everett Ota and our insurance specialist carriers, trustees, I'm gonna read the motion. The proposed motion is to approve the annual renewal of insurance policies for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs as set forth in attachment aid to this action item and authorize administration to execute all necessary applications and instruments necessary to effect and buying coverage. Administration is further authorized to negotiate and accept revised insurance premium quotes for the listed coverages that differ from those set forth in attachment A, provided that the revised insurance premiums fall within prior approved program budgets. So this will be one vote and final action on 2515 so that we can make sure our insurance policies are renewed. So Chair recognizes now Everett Ota.
Thank you, Chair Kahele. Good afternoon, trustees. I'm joined today at the table by Scott Sternberg and Steph Sumoto, who are with Marsh, our insurance brokers that help with our renewals and insurance activities during the course of the year. The insurance action before you this afternoon is to approve our renewals and the premiums associated with those renewals. These are a comprehensive package of insurance coverages that Marsh helps us to obtain. They go out to market. Actually, I'll probably leave maybe the description of all of that work to Scott and Steph. But it is for, again, those coverages. Under the delegation of authority changes that were adopted by this board, this action is coming to you for approval. Previously, these renewals were handled through administration and our processes. But again, ensuring that we're consistent with the desires of this board, we're providing this presentation and hopeful approval for you today. Scott and Steph?
Hi, Steph, Scott. Thanks for being patient. I know you guys were patiently out there waiting. I know you have a time crunch too. So go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Kahele and trustees. Thank you for taking the time to meet with us today. As Everett mentioned, we will be going over your insurance renewal proposal, which is coming up December 1st. Scott will initially give a brief overview of who Marsh is and what we do as an insurance broker. And then he'll share with you a little about the, what we're seeing in the insurance marketplace. And lastly, I'll go through the results, bike coverage for the handout that you just received.
Thank you, Steph. Thank you, Chair Kahele and trustees. Hopefully, we'll make this, we have some good news on the insurance front. When's the last time you heard that? So I'm gonna give you some background here, just to kinda dial you in. So, you know, Steph and ours job is to go out there and look for the best insurance at the lowest cost. Protect your, your assets, your people. That's our job. So each year, we go about doing that. In Hawaii, we've had a difficult time in the insurance market. Post Lahaina, the, the market got very, very, very difficult. So our job got more difficult. But luckily, we have access to a lot of different insurance carriers and we're able to negotiate. So that's what we wanna get into the specifics of today. You know, our office is just down the street at, at Topa, Topa Financial Center. I think that's still the name, even though they got it recently acquired. But yeah, so just look forward to going through this and then we'll certainly answer any questions that you have, okay? So with that, I think Steph is gonna jump right in. Oh, yeah. So on the very next page, I don't know if, yeah, there you go. On the current insurance program, this is a picture of all your insurances across all your different risks, okay? So we have to go out and get specific policies to cover your specific risks. And in Steph's presentation, you're gonna see what each policy does. And in this picture, you're gonna see the type of insurance on the bottom and then the corresponding limits of insurance. That's how much insurance we purchase for you. So with that, we can kind of walk through. Steph?
Okay, next page. Okay, we'll start off with the general liability. So this, this is kinda weird. So this coverage provides, protect Oha against third-party losses for body injury or property damage. So give you an example of a body injury claim is someone that comes into your property and there was a puddle of water and they didn't see it. They tripped and fell. They got injured. So this policy will respond to that type of loss. As you can see, in, in regards to the premium, there's a slight increase. And that again is in this industry standards that we're seeing. The next coverage line is your automobile. It provides third-party, again, liability for you and also physical damage for OHA's vehicles. Again, a small increase. Again, this is due for market, due to market conditions. And OHA has one additional vehicle this year. Next page. For property coverage, this protects your buildings and your personal property against losses such as fire, smoke, vandalism, theft. And this year, we have good news on the results. The initial premium actually came out much higher at $422,000. We're able to negotiate with Swiss Re, your current carrier, to get a reduction of $24,000. So the premium we see here at $398,500 is a 9% decrease year over year. I do wanna mention that OHA's commitment in protecting your properties through investing in safety protection systems had an impact this year. So for example, 34th Avenue location, fire alarm systems and upgrades, fire extinguisher installations of sprinkler system were done. This helped to, for us in our negotiation to reduce your deductible at that location from $500,000 to $250,000. The next coverage is difference in condition. This is also another type of property coverage in covering your buildings and contents. And this actually provides coverage against catastrophic perils such as earthquake, flood, and sprinkler leakage due to an earthquake. Premium decreased year over year by 5%. And this is again what we're seeing in the property market space. Next page. Workers' compensation policy provides coverage for OHA's employees against injuries, sickness sustained from work-related injuries. This year, we got a $20,000 decrease. You may wonder, is that correct? Yes, it is. Yes. Even though your payroll increased by 75%, your employees' count decreased, increased also by 41%. Your losses over the past several years have decreased, which also helped in decreasing your experience by 33%. So keep up the good work. And next line is your umbrella, which provides protections over your primary coverages such as the general liability, the auto liability, and employer's liability. And again, we're seeing a slight increase here, about 20% from expiring. And this again is due to market conditions. Next page is your public officials' liability. This policy protects OHA, its officials, trustees, employees from claims, lawsuits, in the event of an error or decision made in the course of your work. It also, it also provides coverage for legal costs and damages that may result from it. This policy also includes coverage for employment practices liability. For example, sexual harassment, discrimination, and other employment-related issues. So there's all the 11% increase from expiring this year, and that's just due to recent claim activity. Next page. Banker's professional liability. This protects OHA and its employees while doing their loan processing and for errors that may occur while lending servicing or loan servicing. It also provides coverage for legal fees and damages. There's a small increase from expiring, and this again is reflected from the industry, what we're seeing. And finally, the last line is the foreign package policy. This is a special type of bundle insurance coverage. It provides just a variety of coverage, like the general liability, auto, foreign workers, foreign workers' comp when your employees travel abroad, travel accident, and kidnapped ransom. And we're showing here annual premiums. However, AIG back in 2023 provided a two-year option, which OHA had elected. And so this year, on the, on the notes column, we are showing a two-year option. The increase is due basically to increased number of estimated trips from back in 2023. So we see here overall total premium, which is about a 20, 20, 20, 20?
Yeah, about 26,000.
26,000, decrease from expiring. So on behalf of Scott and I, we thank you for your attention and for your time. And we'd like to open up to any questions that you may have.
Yep, Chair, Trustee Souza.
Well, Mr. Chair, thank you guys for joining us here today. How long has Marsh been representing the Office of Hawaiian Affairs as a broker?
Yeah, about 20 years.
20 years. Have you seen the trend? I don't have last year's renewal period, but I know the current program is kind of a wide range of insurance providers or carriers. That sense, I guess, for whatever protection we need in each category. Do you see the trend being we land, end up with the same vendors potentially because it's competitive and they're kind of willing to negotiate down sometimes? Doesn't matter where the market goes. Is that kind of a trend? And in these different categories, is this pretty much, does this align with last year as well?
Yeah, but yeah, I'll start out. Me, Steph, you can add. Yeah, Trustee Souza, yes, absolutely. So, you know, there's a couple of components. You know, we, we wanna go out into the marketplace to create a competitive bid process, but relationship matters. So carriers that have been with us for a while, we wanna develop that relationship, build- been with us for a while, we want to develop that relationship, build it, because we know we can use that either for broader coverage or for lower price. So in this past year, that exactly, that scenario exactly happened. If you look at where we spend your premiums, it's gonna be on your property and then to protect this board, and then for general liability. So on that, on the property side, it was really, we've been seeing tremendous increases in premium, especially for commercial and habitational risk. Okay? So the initial quote came out, we were able to kind of use kind of our knowledge of what other insurances were being placed in our marketplace, and it got that reduction. So, you know, so it's a balance. You know, obviously, we have a relationship, we want to invest in that relationship. This is an insurance program where you make investments, right? We're making an investment in this, but obviously, we're holding them accountable to the best price.
Do they need to be on an approved vendor list with Office of Foreign Affairs or just a broker itself while seeking insurance carriers?
Sorry, go ahead. Is that, is that question related more towards like state procurement or like kind of the competitive markets that we go into?
So we have a broker who is a part of our vendor list, right, which you are a part of, who goes out and?
Procure.
Procures, right? Is that how the process works? I'm just asking, because I have no idea.
Yes, that's right.
First, I'm gonna dive into it, and I appreciate this. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you for the question, Vice Chair Susa. So this is actually a process that's not subject to the state procurement code, but through MAR. So both the insurance as well as the broker services are specifically explicitly exempt from the state procurement code. However, right, through their work, they are the ones that are going out to these various carriers, seeking coverage options and alternative quotes, you know, again, through their knowledge and experience in the market. So that's the process by which we're seeking to competitively search out the best pricing for OHA.
Appreciate that. Thank you, guys. Okay, good. Trustees, any other discussion? Okay. Questions, anyone else?
Just a quick note, sorry. There's a, just, I just wanted to note for the board's awareness, just a couple of small variations from the presentation that was just distributed and just shown on the screen. They just relate to small additions, 2,500 about for the bankers' professional and, sorry, the umbrella coverages. The quotes that we previously included in the board packet were not inclusive of surplus lines tax for the not admitted carriers that are providing these coverages. But that's again, an amount that's still within the budget, so I just wanted to raise that just for transparency and awareness purposes.
Well, we really appreciate Stephanie and Scott, your working together with OHA and the Marsh team, and looking forward to working with you again this coming year.
Thank you.
Any testifiers on this?
There are no testifiers for this item.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Ahuna is excused. Trustee Akaka. Trustee Akina is excused. Trustee Alapa. Trustee Galuteria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Susa.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe.
Yes.
Chair Kahle.
Aye.
You have seven yes votes.
Okay, great. Okay, trustees, we are moving on to the final item on our, thank you so much, on our agenda for today. And I know we have multiple testifiers that are signed up here to speak. So this is a BAE agenda item. Trustees, there's a waiver as part of this, and we have the chair here that can, will be recognized as well to speak to this waiver. And then if it is waived by the board, then we'll place it on the table for discussion. And so Chair recognizes at this point, BAE Chair Galuteria for the action item 2510.
Thank you, Chair. The action item is divided into two parts. First, the approval of OHA's responsive external actions to ongoing military land lease and funding negotiations between the state of Hawaii and the US federal government from the Committee on Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment to the Board of Trustees pursuant to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs' Board of Trustees bylaws, September 4, 2025, Article 8, Section M.
Okay. And I know we've had trustees discussion in the past about waiving the subject matter committee. And so the chair does support the waiver?
Yes.
Okay. That requires a two-thirds vote to move past the subject matter committee and come straight to the board. And really, the reason for it is the sense of urgency that is currently happening as it relates to the military land lease issue and things that is happening in the executive branch of both the state and federal government and OHA's role in that. And so this gives us an opportunity to take some meaningful action and outline some next steps on OHA's role and what we will be doing and what we'll be asserting OHA's role in this particular issue. Any questions on the waiver? Okay, so we are going to have any public testimony? Are there not taking any public testimony on the waiver? I'd rather do an action item?
There are people that did sign up for the waiver, but I don't know if they meant for the action itself.
For the action item. So we're gonna hold that.
Okay.
And, and we'll, let's get to the waiver, because without the waiver, we can't even get to the action item. So let's do that first. Trustees, any discussion on the waiver? Okay. We need Trustee Alapa. Yeah? Okay, we can move forward then. All right. All right, let's do a roll call vote on the waiver.
Trustee Ahuna is excused. Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina is excused. Trustee Alapa will be back. Trustee Galuteria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Susa.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe.
Yes.
Chair Kahle.
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Okay, so now we have action item, BAE 2510, appearing before the board. I'm gonna have the Chair Galuteria read the action item.
Okay, action item, BAE 2510, approval of OHA's responsive external actions to ongoing military land lease and funding negotiations between the state of Hawaii and the US federal government.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So we have a, do we have a motion adopted? Second motion?
Yep.
Okay, so we have BAE 2510 on the table. I want, I'd like the administration to present their presentation before we take public testimony, just so that we can set the landscape and the tone for this action item. And so the Chair recognizes the Chief Advocate Lena Ala Lea, as well as the Chief Operations Officer, Keishon Kikino, to present the action item to the board, and then we'll take public testimony.
Mahalo, Chair. Next slide, please. I am gonna try and make this brief, because I'm not sharing anything anyone here doesn't already know, but given the sensitivity of the matter to our beneficiaries, I did just want to ground us in our history of our Crown and Government lands and really where some of our trust duties come from. Even some of the, you know, other constitutional provisions, we refer to like the public trust and the duty of Malama'a, Aina, and protect natural resources. These concepts come from kingdom law, traditional native Hawaiian management practices. The Constitution of Hawaii builds on what we had as the kingdom. These aren't, these, the best of what was in the kingdom and the best of what is in our current constitution has that root. And I want to give space and honor to that as we talk about the Crown and Government lands, which is a large part of this conversation. So this is the constitution, you know, our constitution, Kamehameha III, recognizing the goal and the practice was that the land was managed by the chiefs for the people. Next slide, please. Of course, we had the Mahale, the king's intent was one-third would go to the commoners, one-third to the Ali'i, and one-third to the king. But of course, that's not what happened. We know that's not what happened. Everyone here again is familiar with the tragedy of what was the Mahale. But the king, the Mo'i, did immediately set aside 1.5 million acres of his own land, his government lands, and then the, what he retained became known as the Crown lands. Next slide, please. Of course, following the overthrow, there was the Republic of Hawaii, first provisional government, they combined what was the Crown and Government lands and cedes those lands upon annexation to the United States. Next slide, please. And, you know, I do want to highlight that sometimes we use the term public land trust here, and I know we've had conversation around that. I do think legally, there is an appropriate time to say public land trust, and the reason why is the Crown and Government lands were 1.0 million acres. The public land trust is less than that. So it's not all of the Crown and Government lands. We have more Crown and Government lands that are the national legacy of our people. The public land trust is a smaller subset of those Crown and Government lands. It came back to the state of Hawaii with the Admissions Act, subject to the five trust purposes, which include the betterment of the conditions of native Hawaiians. So sometimes I do say public trust lands, and just to remember that our Crown and Government lands are more than this. We have, you know, more that is part of our unrelinquished claims to those lands that were taken during the overthrow. Next slide, please. So we have, as OHA, a dual purpose. On the one hand, we are the established state agency to make sure that income and proceeds from the public land trusts are used for the betterment of the conditions of native Hawaiians. And these are some of the areas in which we work. Next slide, please. At the same time, recognizing the history of what happened with the overthrow, we also have that duty to preserve the corpus of our, our Crown and Government lands until such time as our unrelinquished governance claims over those lands can be resolved. So these are the dual duties we have with respect to the public lands. We want to use the income for the betterment of our people, and we also want to preserve the body of those lands. Next slide, please. And then, of course, as the principal state agency responsible for advocating for native Hawaiians, we enforce other constitutional rights and duties, including those related to traditional and customary practices, which are of course closely tied to Aina and the fate of our Crown and Government land and our people's ability to use and access those lands. Next slide, please. And I also included, you know, just to highlight when we are talking about military leases, compensation inadequacy of former compensation, I'm referring to the dollar lease rent. OHA's also the designated agency for the receptacle of reparations for native Hawaiians. So we're not, that, and by reparations, that term refers to like past harm. So the, the conversation around military leases is what, what happens with the land? What is the compensation due? What does the compensation do for the past, the past 65 years when we weren't getting enough money? And those lands were taken without our consent. So it's, it's a conversation. There's so many different ways that OHA relates to these lands, so many different ways that our beneficiaries relate to these lands, so many different ways that what is owed and due can be understood monetarily, the Aina itself, and how we approach that is the conversation that this administration presentation is really just setting the, the stage for the trustees to have that larger conversation, of course, listening to the community that's here today to testify about these issues. And I think that's where you'll get most of the manao that's necessary for your decision-making. And this again is just some of the background with which you're already familiar. Next slide, please. So just to, to talk about some of the things OHA has done to date, because we have been involved in the, the steps leading up to the expiration of the military leases, most of the long-term ones in 2029. With this board's approval, of course, the administration has participated in the EIS process, like much of the community. I think we were expecting that this was a preliminary stage of engagement that we were in back in May and June when we submitted comments on the EIS. And we emphasize many of the same issues as a community, the, the fact that we need to clean up these lands. There's no true return. I know some of the lands on Oahu have been proposed for return, like Makua, but what does return mean without a commitment and a clear timeline from the federal government about funding and steps on cleanup? So that was something we emphasized. CIA, short for Cultural Impact Analysis, part of the reason that the BLNR rejected the EIS was for failure to conduct a capa'akai analysis. Again, that's under Article 12, Section 7, about impacts to traditional and customary practices, failure to adequately inventory the, the lands for historical and cultural resources. All of these military lands have EV, non-heal, sacred sites, cultural sites that have been harmed in the past and are still at risk, as long as there's military use of the land. Biological assessment for natural resources. And then, you know, one of the things we talked about in our comments also was if there is further lease of these lands, at least like what is the shortest timeline, so that we don't have this situation where it's only once in a generation that we have the opportunity to come to the table. 65 years is too long. And as part of that, of course, necessarily what compensation, discussion around compensation is necessary. There was a rejection, of course, in May and June of those EISs, which started to bring us to the situation where we're in today, which is following the BLNR's decision to reject the EIS, we started to hear about the governor's engagement with the army on a potential accelerated timeline that would not allow for compliance with HIPAA, all these other laws I just mentioned related to protecting biological and cultural and archaeological resources, and also sort of an acquiescence on the governor's part to the idea of condemnation, which of course is permanent alienation. So we've been, it started slowly in August and has recently accelerated. Next slide, please. We, and again, going back to what OHA has been doing, but in the context of, of course, what's been happening at the state, we have been advancing through the Association of Hawaiian Civic Club convention, different policy solutions, including the constitutional amendment that was, that was accepted today as part of OHA's legislative package. There were discussions during the island community meetings recently that included community perspectives and feedback on what OHA should be doing. And OHA was, part of the purpose of those community meetings was to engage the community. There was the letter sent on November, November 7 to actively engage with Governor Green's proposed negotiating teams. And then again, of course, the, the approval of our constitutional amendment. So OHA has been, and I welcome the trustees if there's items they'd like to add to this list, but this is just to emphasize that we have been trying to advance policy solutions to address the situation that we find ourselves in, which is rapidly evolving. Next slide, please. So this, I kind of touched on this already. The most recent announcement was October 29th, about a proposed $10 billion settlement essentially on the assumption that the federal government's just gonna condemn the land. Next slide, please. The settlement framework, which has been criticized by many different people, and I'm sure the community will bring many of other issues not flagged here to the fore, but I did want to mention a few of them. 500 million is considered by many way too small as an initial investment in cleanup. Kohol Lave has been about $400 million to date, and very little has been done to clean up that much smaller area of land when compared to Makua. The state has been designated as the recipient for returned lands, which is contrary to what some of our community is asking. They'd like to see community partnership on stewardship of retained land. There is kind of this token recognition of local economic participation, but it's not really developed in any detail. There's transparency and oversight for joint army-state body, but again, we know from Red Hill, without community involvement in any type of oversight body, it's very unlikely that the, that the military will be held to the, the standard, the high standard that the community depends on these issues. And then also, it's very troubling to me is this liability closure, which again, when it comes to remediation as well as other issues, that's troubling that this would be the final settlement. That would be a one-time by the end of the year decision. that's troubling that this would be the final, uh, settlement. That would be a one-time by the end of the year decision on all of these very, very critical, critical issues that our community and beneficiaries have not been consulted on. That really not even the legislature of Hawaii has been consulted on. This seems to be a purely administrative initiative from the administration, the Green administration. So we, along with many others, are, are concerned about this lack of consultation. Next slide, please. So that's all background to bring us up to speed, um, to next steps. Would, would any of the trustees like to add anything to our OHA advocacy to date before we turn to the next steps that the administration is proposing? Okay, sure. Okay. So again, because this is, the action item was somewhat imprecise. Um, we, we raised a few potential next steps, but it wasn't supposed to be exhaustive of all the potential actions that the trustees could take. So we wanted to, in helping frame it, um, these are kind of some of the pillars of action that OHA can take. We've already engaged in certain advocacy activities. We're starting to engage around education. Um, we're looking at launching a website that would house critical information and updates that would be available to the public. And then again, the consultation process, which we've just begun, but that we would like to expand upon as stated in the action item. Next slide, please. And, um, really quickly, I skipped something in the OHA timeline that I should have mentioned and was part of the AI. Uh, we had in October representatives from the community who took action back in September, right after Governor Green initially announced his end-of-year timeline. And the community, there was over 40 or right around 40 native Hawaiian organizations that signed onto a letter that set forth principles that the community would like to see the governor and whoever's involved in negotiations adhere to. And, and that was presented to this, um, board last month, and again, attached to the action item. Um, that was an important, uh, step of community engagement and, and part of our proposal response to that. So I just wanted to flag that. So our proposed next step is to authorize, um, the chair or his delegate to participate in Governor Green's joint negotiation team and technical working group. And actually, just before I came into this meeting, there was a public announcement of the joint negotiation team and summer was added to it. There's also the request to authorize the administration to conduct regularly scheduled consultation with the community. So that would be similar to what was held on Hawaii Island, whether the community could come and give us feedback as the situation on the ground evolves. That could be, and it could be through the administration or alternatively, the BOT could elect itself to convene more regularly on this specific topic as a way to communicate with the, um, or make sure that we are making decisions that are informed by community mana'au. Adopt the community statement of principles on military lease negotiations, which again, was in the letter that was attached to the action item. We could bring that forward as a separate action item, um, or we could adopt it as stated in the attachment. Next slide, please. This would be to kind of continue what we've already done, but to authorize the administration to advocate as ne- necessary around, um, a potential lease extension period. This is one of the policy ideas that's been proposed with the goal that that lease extension period would be used to enable compliance with the statutes that the governor is currently not complying with, such as, um, Hawaii Environmental Protection Act, Historic Preservation Review under 60, um, other applicable statutes. Oh, sorry, that's duplicative. Next slide, please. Um, authorize the administration to continue to develop educational materials. Uh, and as a follow-up to community consultation, um, we're proposing that to advance, um, and any, um, required compliance and to make sure that any extension of leases is, of the leases to enable compliance at times being utilized, um, we're proposing that OHA take up the kuliana of preparing the kapakai analysis. It's due by the state. So based on the consultation that we're having with the community, we would be the agency to write up that required, constitutionally required analysis of how does this, how does the military retention of lands? Or how does the military's proposed action affect our community? You know, that, that investigation, what are the practices that are affected? Um, and how can we mitigate those effects? And I think this would be an appropriate uh, role for OHA to play in, um, compiling the, our community perspectives on exactly how military lease or military land use affects our community. So these are some of the proposed, um, next steps. And n- next slide, please. So the statement of principles, again, could be brought back to this board as a separate action item, but this is taken directly from the letter that was, um, sent by the 40 organizations on September 2nd and shared with OHA previously and just cut and paste. Uh, and I really think that we are in line with most of these principles to include the native Hawaiian community in decision-making. Uh, I think that's something we support. Vigorously pursue the cleanup, um, of all lands to the military. Um, I think the, what does return of all lands mean might require further discussion. Um, but I think our, our advocacy to date has been in line with this. Next slide, please. Um, accountability, oversight and restitution. We talked about that for past action. Um, compliance with the law, which is something we've asked for and are asking to ensure moving forward, and commitment to transparency and consent. So if the board, um, would like, we can definitely bring this back again in a separate action item, but I just wanted this to be readily available since it was part of the action item. This was what was in the September 2nd letter. As far as how we should engage as we move forward with trying to engage with Governor Green's negotiating team.
Okay, let's do public testimony now. Thank you so much. And I know trustees, we've been going for at least almost two hours, 45 minutes on. So if you need to use restroom, we can do that. But we do have a number of testifiers sign up. How many do we have? In person?
We have, one, two, three, four, five, six, eight in person, if they're all still here.
Online?
And online. No one's raising their hand to speak.
Okay, so no one's online. We have eight in person. Let's start with the first person.
First person is Healanee.
Healanee, welcome. Yeah, yeah, we'll just remind everyone, we typically give five minutes for public testimony and we do appreciate your patience. We know you guys have been waiting for a while. We just needed to get through this business and save, uh, a very important discussion for the last item. So go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, aloha Chair Kahale, Vice Chair Suza and honorable trustees. These past couple of years of hearings, community organizing and statewide advocacy have made one point absolutely clear. The people of Hawaii reject any new leases on our sacred lands. Through oral testimonies, petitions and council meetings, our communities have consistently raised the alarm about the desecration and poisoning of our aina and vai, and escalating threats posed by continued military occupation. In 2024, during the Army's hearings on Oahu regarding its proposal to retain 6,322 acres, community members filled meeting rooms in Waianae, Wahihua and Kahuku. Hundreds testified, kupuna, practitioners, ohana, kiaki, students and veterans. The vast majority expressing unwavering opposition. Nearly 4,790 signatures were added to the Protect Oahu Change petition. This message has been crystal clear, auletu lease renewals and continued military use. For Pohakula, the BLNR held a hearing on May 9th, 2025, where over 1,300 pages of testimony were submitted, more than eight hours of statements were delivered, and nearly 70 organizations stood in solidarity. The public demanded rejection of the deficient EIS, decision-making on Hawaii Island, um, and full transparency. The BLNR ultimately rejected the Army's final EIS for Pohakula. On June 27th, 2025, the BLNR reviewed the Army's final EIS for Oahu. The public submitted 782 pages of written testimony and provided over five hours of oral testimony, critiquing the Army's inadequate final EIS, uniting voices across every moku district. The BLNR again rejected the Army's final EIS for Oahu, unprecedented. Despite the BLNR's clear rejections and overwhelming public opposition, the governor has now shifted course. Instead of supporting the BLNR decision, he has, and he is entering into the direct negotiations with the US Army, discussing a proposed 10 billion settlement framework. His October 29th, 2025 memo outlines a path forward involving potential and con- potential condemnation authority and long-term army access, bypassing the legal open process designed to protect the public trust and consider public input. Entering negotiations after both the Army EISs were, after both Army EISs were rejected raises serious concerns about transparency, state authority and the future of our lands. On September 3rd, 2025, the Hawaii County Council unanimously passed Resolution 234-25, calling for the end to bombing at Pohakula. The testifiers highlighted demilitarization, Kanaka Maoli stewardship, environmental restoration and long overdue due justices. And I've testified and attended all these hearings. Um, council members affirmed what the public has stated for decades. The bombing and poisoning of Pohakula must end. Kalahui Hawaii supports most of OHA's kuliana outlined in the agenda packet to protect the quote-unquote "seeded lands trust" by safeguarding Crown and government lands from further alienation. Uh, we support ensuring the legislative oversight and transparency required under HRS 171, opposing lease extensions or land exchanges that weaken native Hawaiian claims and securing environmental cleanup and cultural resource protection and restitution for decades of military damage. However, Kalahui Hawaii rejects any settlement, investment package or monetary proposal in exchange for stolen Hawaiian lands. No amount of money can replace papahanaumoku, our earth mother. Our lands are not for sale. They must be returned to Kanaka Maoli stewardship. So for agenda items, item 11, um, 3G, we urge OHA to affirm the BLNR's rejection of both Army final EISs, recognize the overwhelming public opposition to any new military leases, and support the full return of these lands into Kanaka Maoli care. Protecting our future requires ending the poisoning of our water, land and ecosystems as these harms intens- intensify under climate change and global warming. And the decisions made now will shake the well-being of generations to come. Mahalo Nui for your time. Mahalo.
Thanks, Healanee. Okay, next testifier?
Next testifier is James Maiho.
Aloha.
Aloha, James.
First of all, I wanted to, uh, say how much I appreciated that presentation. That, that was really good to, to set the, uh, the tone for this. And I appreciate the, um, opportunity to further set the table on this issue. This is one of the issues that our group will be spending a lot of time, down at the ledge, um, and in public, uh, working on. And for the technical part of it, I, I do believe that you should authorize the chair for this measure, pass this measure for, for these negotiations. My stance, our stance, is that we should do everything possible to make these leases come to their full term and wait out your legislation as it works its way through session. And while we wait for the public to, to have their voice heard in, in a meaningful way. I would prefer that we force the governor to, um, force the US military to exercise eminent domain. Make them do that. We do not have to, um, a- agree to anything but holding out to the end of the lease before that. We already know that the terms of the current lease have not been met a- a- and in so many ways. I, I agree with everything that Healanee said, you know, I dissected both of the EISs and testified on both of those, and they are severely lacking in content. We, we should not be helping them out by giving them information of the studies for something that they didn't want to do themselves. So overwhelmingly, we know this is not right, but I also wanted to share, as I shared yesterday and some folks heard, my wife and I had the opportunity to go through Pohakula Tuesday, um, and to a rare part of it, um, and through the live fire and impact zones and that. And the devastation that you see to that aina, having been there and have recently been behind it a few miles at Ahua'omi, and spending the night there, it's, it was really shocking to see the devastation on the ground yesterday, and that's what we're allowed to see. But also to be camping out behind there performing ceremony and seeing these munitions go off at night and feeling the ground shake and feeling it come through your kino. And, and all the vibrations of everything going there. And that, that whole plain, that whole Umi'a Loa Trail, that whole area i- is ripe, filled with erie everywhere. And every piece of munition that goes off further desecrates that from, so for that point alone, OHA is the voice of the people, should stand fully against anything with these leases. But I'm also a pragmatic person, and I understand that these negotiations are already going on and the people need a voice. You folks are that voice. And you need to represent interests like Uncle Eko, like Uncle Sparky, like Auntie Lynette, these people that have been fighting, you know, the heva on this aina all over for decades. $500 million, that, that doesn't even touch a plan to start remediation on these sites. The devastation there is beyond billions of dollars. We don't know how bad the water table's poisoned. We don't know the real impact of that, because we really don't have insight to what's really going on there. And I, I say that as in a prior life, having several clients that were high-level military contractors. So I've worked with military contractors and suppliers and everything from somebody like a Black and Beach to Halliburton that does full infrastructure in Afghanistan and the Middle East, to very sensitive, can I say? Very sensitive work that requires all negotiation be done in a skiff. So there are other things that go on there that the public is not aware of. Advanced development, other things that outside of infantry training, which they claim is there to make Hawaii more safe. It is not. What happens on these bases makes Hawaii one of the hottest nuclear targets on the planet because of what is underground there and in these other sites. This cannot be allowed to continue. So in your negotiations, as the voice for the people, I again call for you to write a letter asking for more commentary on this while we let the public watch your legislation work its way through this session and hopefully have a voice.
Thanks, thank you. Thank you, James. Mahalo. Our next speaker is Ilima Long. Ilima, please come forward.
You can start my timer in about 45 seconds, okay? Thank you. Okay, aloha members of the board. My name is Ilima Long, and I'm the Pelikikanah for Kaahahui Hawaii Aloha Aina, more commonly known as Hui Aloha Aina, which was reconstituted through its original constitution by Kupuna across the Pai Aina in 2015. Mahalo for your thoughtful attention to the matter of the military leases. It's clear that the Office of Hawaiian Affairs is familiar with this issue and is taking action, so I'm not here to lecture anybody. I'm here today on behalf of our five branches to encourage you to continue in this direction and in alignment with the law hui. I want to offer some history to ground this once-in-a-generation opportunity to quote Chair Kahale that lies before us. Hui Aloha Aina was founded on March 4th in 1893, just four days after the illegal, 44 days after the illegal overthrow of Queen Lele Wokeleani, with 35 branches across five islands. Five years prior to that, the leaders most associated with it, James Kalia, Io Sapan, Aima Navahi, and John Alwene Bush, to name a few, had been organizing relentlessly to overturn the 18- had been organizing relentlessly to overturn the 1887 Bayonet Constitution. That constitution was a power grab by the sugar planters, the corporate and financial class of their time, who overpowered the will of the people and the chiefs in order to cede Pearl Harbor to the United States. They did this to secure, resecure duty-free record sugar profits, selling out Hawaiian lands to the U.S. military interests for cash, all while messaging that this is what's best for the people of Hawaii. That sounds very familiar to what's happening right now. So lesson one of this history is that we've been here before. But these Hawaiian leaders of the time did not surrender. They built political movements across ethnicities to form parties, won razor-thin majorities in the legislature, circulated petitions, filled the newspapers with political discourse, and educated and organized the people. Some, like Robert Wilcox, even took up arms. They built a movement for pono because they were committed to truth. They were undeterred by defeat, and they knew the law, and they were guided by courage. They were also very purely committed to democracy, similarly to how they were so purely committed to Christianity. In 1893, these leaders jumped into action once again, collecting petitions from every electoral district in the Pai'a'a'ina for a new constitution that would restore power to the Maui and the dignity of the la hui. Joseph Navahi himself delivered these petitions to the queen. Two-thirds of all registered voters signed. This is when Lili'u'okalani reflected, "To have ignored or disregarded so general a request, I must have been deaf to the voice of the people, which tradition tells us is the voice of God." The second lesson is when leaders act with courage and conviction, people follow. But there is also a third lesson from this time that is darker and more relevant than ever. Between 1887 and 1893, as Hawaiian leaders gained ground, the corporate class grew increasingly authoritarian. They landed American troops two times in Honolulu prior to the overthrow, declared martial law, raided the homes of Hui'kali'a'a'ina members, seized newspapers, seized literature, and sought to imprison newspaper editors like John Bush for sedition. When those scare tactics failed and the queen put forward a new constitution anyways, they resorted to what remained, the intervention from foreign power. Our people have lived under and fought through authoritarian power before, and it was precisely that fight of our kupuna that when that history was recovered, restored the dignity of our people. So we are living under a rising authoritarian regime, federal regime, that oversees an already inflated military-industrial complex. They are going to do what they are going to do, but we have to fight anyway. We have to fight for our rights, we have to fight our best, and we have to fight smart. I'm gonna kind of scrap the rest to save my time, which I don't know where I'm at, but to talk a little bit about the revelations of today, where this, one minute, okay? Where the governor has now appointed an advisory board. This is not democracy. We need to commit to democracy. This is not following the law. So I very much support Oha's direction to assert its rights to negotiate. Advisory teams don't negotiate. I'm not here on behalf of my jobs, but for the last four years, I have worked for labor unions, and I know a little bit about negotiations. Advisory committees are nothing. So Hawaiians need a meaningful seat at the table. We need a meaningful pathway and space to meaningfully fight for what Yalani talked about, the return of our lands. And we are looking for the leaders who are going to have our back, and we are looking for the leaders whose backs we are to have. And I want to commend Oha and the two county councils who have thus far shown much more leadership and commitment to the people's voice than the governor or the legislature has so far. Mahalo.
Thank you, Ilima. Thank you for your work with ILWU. Our next speaker is Keanu Lani. Yeah, please come forward. Yeah, right there, right there. Okay, thank you. You have five minutes. Please proceed.
Sorry, my notes just deleted. Okay, I pressed this thing? Sorry, it's my first time. Okay. Aloha. Ova'o Keanu Lani. No'au'i Kalihi. No'au'a'u Ma'au. Oka'aluku Ma'au. I'm a third-generation member of Hui'Kuli'ke'Kakau. And my intention here today is to ma'ama. I want to bring in my uncle Kauka, my good friends Bee, Kaliko, Ha'ahayo, and Akira. And I just wanted to point out the statement that Chair had made in which she said, "The expiration of the current 65-year military leases presents a once-in-a-generation opportunity to restore balance." And the statement was completely betrayed by Josh Green's overstepping, overreaching, overjoyed bootlicking into a $10 billion deal. You said that this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity. And Chair, let us be clear, we do not have another generation to spare. $10 billion. Josh Green's proposal intends to create reforestation programs, invasive species removal, unexploited ordinance cleanups. But how can any of those promises be praised? How will our native plants survive in poisoned soil? How will we grow from polluted waters? And how will we breathe toxic air? There are no corrupt efforts that could possibly amount to the benefit of the U.S. military deoccupying these lands. There are no corrupt efforts that could possibly amount to the benefit of the U.S. military deoccupying these lands. More important, I'll bring voice to the aina ma'mona that is created when these occupied lands are returned to Kanaka. Kanaka that truly cherish, sustain, protect ma'ama with perpetuity in the well-being of the health of the land and fitness of the people. Aloha aina. I need you to return to the framework where sovereignty exists because it does, because it has kept us alive and fed our kupuna for generations and generations. It exists today within our pu'u honua. Our resistance does not end here underneath these fluorescent lights and these tiny microphones and these cushy chairs. We are in the lepo cultivating, organizing, most importantly, decolonizing. And I want you to be there with us. Somewhere deep in your bones, there's a ka'ahia urging you to return. And I want you to be there. I want you to be there when the Makalua mat is unfurled and food is shared in joy and love. But until then, I cannot mahalo you. I cannot mahalo you until you fulfill your kuleana, until you uphold your kulana, until you hold Josh Green accountable, until you onipaa and aloha aina. And I'm not here to shame anybody into accountability. That's not how it works. You need to be willing, you need to feel empowered to change, not from shame, but from aloha. The first step is to use your power in whatever capacity it is to stand up for la hui. Our community is upset, but I give you grace. The vicious character of the United States systemically eradicates crucial symbiotic relationships between species endemic to specific moku. And these endangered relationships are necessary for our aina to thrive, for our rain to come, for our seeds to spread. And we cannot let another go extinct. We need to restore and protect every relationship we have in our aina and our la hui, currently including this one. And this is a chance to change and to do the right thing. Heola.
Mahalo, thank you. Mahalo. Next, Davis Price, followed by Viki Takamine.
Turn it on. No, turn it on. It keeps going red. Red is on, okay. Sorry. Okay, I'll go check, cut to the chase. I had a whole testimony planned and then got some news while we were sitting here waiting, and it's kind of changing, not really changing the plan, but got a touch on it. So I wanted to just rehash, I'm a regular now. I hadn't been here for many years and now the last, been here a lot the last couple of months, even chased you guys to Hilo. Thank you for indulging the conversation that the community is asking for. Just wanted to recap where we're at with this military lease issue and the organizing that's been happening with the community. You know, we made a request. Thank you for pulling that up and considering putting it on the agenda today. That request stems from a statement that 39 Native Hawaiian organizations signed on to, and we issued it publicly on September 2. And, you know, it really, at the root of it, was calling for the governor and the U.S. military to follow the law. That's our community statement. And then we came to you folks to ask that you support community in demanding that the governor and the military follow the law. That hasn't changed, even though there's been a number of developments since that time. So since we made that statement, we came to you folks. We asked the governor for a response, we didn't get one. The community asked for a response, we didn't get one. He then issued a statement of principles that he crafted with the U.S. Army Secretary Driscoll. And then a few weeks later, issued this letter that proposes a number of, a laundry list of things that he would consider in trade with the U.S. military, you know, in exchange for their continued use and desecration of our lands, a settlement. And so we talked a little bit about that settlement last time I came. But ultimately, you know, regardless of, many people have chined in on the settlement, $10 billion a year arbitrary number, you know, which in actuality is the same amount that the Army claims to spend in one year. So $10 billion equates to one year of military spending in Hawaii. So when you put it in that perspective, it doesn't seem like a whole lot on their end that they're conceding something to consider. If we were to entertain the fact that these negotiations are happening in reality right now. And, you know, one of our calls was for Native Hawaiian representation, and that was a tricky one, and it's getting more tricky because we don't acquiesce that this process is legal. We have stated very clearly it's not legal, it's not following the law. So a Native Hawaiian seat at this table is meaningless, and we've been consistent about that. That doesn't change. Our request was never to be or have an advisory role or to have a seat at this table. It was to assert our standing as the beneficiaries of the public land trust. We are entitled to legal rights, which Chief Advocate very thoroughly got to share, or briefly, the history behind that, and that doesn't change. And Oha is a representative, the fiduciary named with the constitutional mandate to represent those beneficiary interests. So it's not about asking for a seat at the table. This is the table. And that's what we need to assert. We've been asserting it, it's picking up, you know, momentum. We held an event last night, we're bringing in, we're working with some really high-level scholars and researchers who have dug into a number of economic elements of the U.S. military around the world, and they're lending their support to Hawaii because they see the importance in helping us do the due diligence necessary to inform a negotiation when the time is right. Now's not the time, and this process that's being put forward is still illegal. And I think that Oha, you know, you folks, it would be amazing, you know, the request was made to adopt the statement, that hasn't changed, that request is still on the table. Last time I was here, I asked that, you know, I added on to that request informally, saying it would be great if you folks could deploy some, to commit some resources, staff, to community engagement, to supporting the legal research and community engagement necessary for us to address this matter. And that is still standing, and I just want to close with touching on this, the committee, the news that just came out about an hour ago that there's an advisory committee that's been appointed by the governor. I know many of those people, they're colleagues, I trust them, I've worked them, I think fondly of them. I believe that they're well-intended people. I think, I believe that they've probably accepted this role with great intentions, but it does not change the fact that this process does not follow the law. And our request was never to be, to have an advisory committee role. That's not, first of all, we don't need to be requesting. Like I said, we have standing. And if we have to go through the legal processes to assert that standing, I think Oha should be prepared to do that. And I'm not going to oppose or support the committee as of right now, but we're definitely gonna have some conversations over the next 24 hours to determine what's happening. And right now, I'll just say that we still demand that the law be followed. And that's it.
Thanks, Davis. Mahalo. Okay, next testifier is Viki Takamine, then followed by Liko Martin.
Four times. Aloha.
Thank you for being patient.
Yes. Aloha, I'm Viki Ho'Takamine. I'm here on behalf of Iliu'ula'ou'kalani Coalition, Coalition of Kumuhula and Halauhula that advocate for the protection of our aina. So I just got that list of names of who's on this advisory committee. We cannot compromise. I'm not a good, I'm not a, I cannot compromise. How many times do you poison somebody before it dies? How many times do you poison our aina and our water before our islands and our people die? And every time they have this activity on our land, it's poison. They have never cleaned it up, ever. You show me one acre of land, military land, that they have used and that they've cleaned up and restored it to a usable state. Every acre that they touch cannot ever be used by any of us anymore. And that's the, that's the fact. And no amount of money can compensate our people and our aina. We cannot compromise on this issue. There's no, there's nothing, there's no compensation. Kahoolave, Makua, are any of those lands usable? Pohakula, not even. Not even. So we have to hold fast on this. I looked at the list of names. They better not compromise either because I can hold all of them accountable. All of them accountable for their actions. And that, this decision-making is going to be something that's going to seal their legacy for the future. And we cannot be there, you folks cannot be there. So I'm just trusting that you folks will make the right decision, and we fight, and we fight hard, and we fight to the end. Because that's what our kupuna wants. That's what they expect of us, and that's what our people deserve. Smahalo.
Thank you, Auntie Viki. Okay, Liko Martin, followed by Ben Schaefer.
Aloha. Aloha, aloha to everyone here, all the guys out there in cyberspace. Aloha. I think the time has arrived. For what? What I would need to share before, actually, my comments are documents that I'd like to make available to members of the board, please. I don't expect you to read them all now, but I leave them with you. I don't expect you to read them all right now, but I leave them with you and inform you that those are documents that were, these were comments that were submitted to the record on June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Before the acting state historic preservation officer regarding the military leases. What is brought to mind here is, to bear is that affirmation of the state staff recommendations of all the irregularities, all the, the heaven, and everything that has been happened that we are unable to hold people accountable for how many hundred years. And a request to, to let the, to notify the state agency, historic preservation officer under United States Code Title sixteen, conservation with respect to Part A historic preservation programs of the existence of the Hawaii, the revised laws of Hawaii nineteen fifty-five. And here's a copy of them. I didn't have enough copies for everyone. Of which is the, the grandpa of historic preservation issues since nineteen fifty-nine. Nineteen fifty-five, the revised laws were put in place, they consolidated our authority as the chief governing authority underneath United States Code in dealing with foreign policy. And the United States having no, and the Congress having no treaty of annexation when they passed, when they imposed a provisional government in nineteen fifty-nine, similar to what happened in this Committee of Safety, what they did in eighteen ninety-eight. When President Eisenhower says, we're going to proclaim the state of Hawaii, they impose a provisional government. Okay. What is detailed, so I'm letting Chairman, the Chairman, Don Chang, letting, letting her know that I can see this. And that I had, on previous occasions, I had questioned her to be sure that she was acting as a historic preservation officer under Title sixteen in a foreign country. They were shocked when I asked that question. She, she didn't really know how she was operating, and it wasn't known to the, to, to, to the people in the board of the limitations of and responsibilities of a historic preservation officer subject to the revised laws of nineteen fifty-five, that is Hawaiian law set by Hawaiian judicial president and the actions of Governor George, Jo, whatever his name is, I'm going back to Arioshi already, okay? Governor, I can't even say Governor at this point, I say Josh Green, acting as the governor is a treaty infringement. Our treaty of eighteen fifty has never been abrogated. He is complicit in what he has done in, in engaging an act of war in violation of Constitution, United States Article one, Section eight, Clause eleven, the war powers clause. What is the United States military doing in Hawaii? That is the question. What is articulated in this is, where is our process going forward now that we know that the emperor has no clothes? Okay, and he is out of uniform, his little badge is upside down. He has become a war criminal under the Rome Statute, elements of crime of the International Criminal Court, by what he has done. He has gone beyond, where he could have gone was to stay within the confines of US Code Title sixteen and defer to the Secretary of Interior to have a discretion determination of whether or not the state historic preservation program is consistent, but it is not, okay?
Thirty seconds.
In here, thirty seconds. I've already, this allows us as one lahui, back from the time of the ancestors who filed for the Kuai petition in support of Queen Lilu'ou'kalani, to come forward and rally up under the United States Constitution, respecting the law of nations in the matter, in the manner of settling disputes between nations. That is the issue that is now on the table. We're back to January seventeen, eighteen ninety-three. That's where we are. Thank you, Josh Green. And aloha to all the Ohana, onipaa, onipaa, onipaa. And we need to hold them accountable. We need to go, not to join Josh Green, but we need to get ourselves together to go straight to the Department of Defense, go straight to the Commander in Chief. As the lahui that we are, already there's a draft to go to the United Nations and bring the United Nations involved because the federal constitution of the United States has been used as a sword. It is not our beneficiary.
Thank you, Liko, thank you so much. Okay, Ben, followed by Nathan Kamehale. Then we have one testifier online.
Aloha, Mike Kaku, Ben Schaefer from Kahana. On this particular issue, oh, number one, uh, three of my grandfathers are Navy veterans, number two, both of my, my stepfather and my dad are Army veterans and I am a US Air Force veteran. The military today is very different. We see with our eyes open with the media. Yeah, and for the last seventy-plus years, they have been full-on genocide, denying it left and right because the media allows them to. And this is now, we, we don't want to be any part of it. We didn't, if they train on our lands, then we become part of, of that killing, wherever it might be, and they've done it so many times. And so what we would like to do is, uh, I think the strategy from the other ones, and I could call it all of them, is that, uh, the last president was Pilau, but this one is worse. And so the question is, how do we delay, right? Until, until this president gets out and then we can try something different. I think that would be the best way to work with it and, and work with, uh, and let us know how we can help you so that you can be on, not the advisory one, but the real one.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Mahalo. Okay, Nathan, last in-person testifier is Nathan Kamehale, and then we have two online. Hello, Nathan.
Hello, Kaku. Hello, Kaku, aloha, Nui, Ku lahui. I am Nathan Kamehale, lineal descendant of the Kamehale Nui line. I don't usually speak at these meetings, but I felt that it was important because what we do today and what we decide on will affect our keke, our mo'puna, and beyond. Uh, it's our kuliana. OHA, let me remind you what your kuliana is, or what your role in Hawaii is. Anything that affects Kanaka Ma'uli, Kanaka Uivi, period. Yeah, uh, it's in your name, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, anything that affects us. Who do you work for and who do you answer to? Us, not the general public, not the fake state of Hawaii, and not the illegal occupiers, United States of America government and military, who are terrorists in Hawaii. If you don't know this, let's do some research. It's out there. No new leases for the state and the US government. They are illegal and illegitimate in Hawaii. We all know this. Facts. The Hawaiian Kingdom is still here. The overthrow of Hawaii by the United States of America and the US businessmen, illegal. The Committee of Safety, illegal and illegitimate. The Republic of Hawaii, illegal and illegitimate. The State of Hawaii, illegal and illegitimate, still to today. The state doesn't tell you what to do, you tell the state what to do as the voice of our people. In reality, if you have a tenant that is bad, they get kicked out and they get fined. As we know, the US military has a conservation land lease, they're not conserving anything. They're stealing from us. They have broken their treaties and leases a long time ago. As we know, Pearl Harbor, Superfund Site, they polluted that. Red Hill, pollution, more pollution, and they're trying to cover it up. The US military cannot be trusted, and they have proven it them, they have proven it themselves. The US military has cleaned up zero percent of the ammunition they have ever shot since they've been here. Decades, century plus, continuing the poison of our land, resources, and the people of Hawaii to this date. Illegitimate leases, who okayed the one dollar for sixty-five years to the US military? I think it's important to look back and see who okayed this. Yeah, from who and by who. Nonetheless, it's all still illegitimate and illegal. What affects Kanaka Ma'uli and Kanaka Uivi is OHA's kuliana. Whether you take it on and do something about it or not. I understand, your plate is full. Your predecessors maybe never do their job, but you must. We expect you to uphold what's pono for the benefit of Ko Hawaii'ai'aina and Kanaka Uivi. Let's get to work. Mahalo.
Thank you. Okay, that was Nathan, yeah, Kamehale, so we have online. Two testifiers, first one is Nani, followed by Kaliko Ayu. Nani, are you there?
Nani, we can come back to you, I think we lost her.
Okay.
Oh, never mind, she's there, she's there, sorry.
Oh, she's there, okay, great.
Oh, yeah, you can hear me, Kaku?
Yes, we can, aloha.
Hola, mahalo, mahalo, Nui. Before you start my minutes, I just wanted to actually mahalo, um, all of you trustees for approving January sixteenth and seventeenth, um, for the onipaa march because it is super important for all of our people to know. And it's super important for us to celebrate and commemorate the, the great leadership of our queen, Lilu'ou'kalani. All right, and so I implore upon you trustees, um, to become the leader that she was. All right, so, um, before I start saying anything else, I also want to say that I oppose any renewals of the military leases, I oppose any transfers, I oppose this legal negotiation BS that's going on right now. However, we're in this mix at the moment. And so before OHA takes any responsive external action on military land lease negotiations, the beneficiaries deserve clarity, accountability, and courage and transparency from this board. All right, first, authority and representation. And I'd like for, I'm, I'm hoping that, that this board can be transparent in this, uh, acts as, sorry.
My son is calling.
Acts externally, who are you representing? The state of Hawaii? The Uivi? Kanaka Hawaii'i and Kanaka lahui. All right, please have that answered by the end of this. And I, and representation, um, Kai, I, I, I read somewhere that you are looking to be a, a representative uh, for the people on this, uh, particular movement, is that correct? Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, can you repeat your question?
All right, so I, I was, I read somewhere that the chair is to be on this, uh, um, negotiation movement. Is that correct?
That is not correct.
That is not correct? Okay, okay, let me move forward then, I'll come back to that in just a minute. All right, so my second part of this, the federal condemnation, uh, threat. We all know the federal government has the power to condemn land through eminent domain. If the state demands too much money or a negotiation stalls, the feds can bypass the state, bypass OHA and seize the lands permanently, paying fair market value with zero cultural consideration. And so I asked OHA, have you assessed the risk that condemnation could remove these lands from Hawaiian claims forever? And if so, what is your plan? Third, the ten billion dollar conversation. Josh Green is, is publicly exploring multiple billion dollar compensation for military leases. Whether it becomes five billion, ten dol, ten billion or more, what does OHA stand? Will OHA oppose any agreement that prioritizes money over land restoration? All right, the beneficiaries deserve a clear yes and no, yes or no from that. Fourth, environmental and cultural protection. Will OHA demand full cleanup of UXO contamination, aquifer, aquifer damage, cultural site destruction before anything is even considered? All right, if the military refuses to release environmental or archaeological data, what steps will OHA take immediately? Fifth, relationship to the state. If the state of Hawaii agrees to harmful terms, is OHA willing to publicly oppose the governor? Because OHA cannot protect Kanaka Uivi, Kanaka Hawaii'i, Kanaka lahui if it cannot stand independently. And last, a vision for the next seven generations. How, how do OHA's actions today support land-back, culture-survivor, survival, and Hawaiian self-governance? Where's the seventh generation plan guiding this decision? Aloha is responsibility, kuliana is optional. This is another, um, historic moment right now. And Kai, you were involved in, uh, another one, uh, in regards to Makua. And so transparency is super important and trust is super important because I remember in that press conference that you held, in one sentence, you said Makua should go back to the people. And a few sentences later, you said Makua should go back to the state. Makua and all of the rest of these aina of Hawaii does not belong to the state of Hawaii. Does not belong to the United States. All right, and so this historic moment demands that OHA act with transparency, courage, and unwavering loyalty to the lahui. If OHA chooses to speak externally on our behalf, then stand in your kulana fully. Stand in truth, stand for land, stand for our future. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Nui'ua. Okay, next is Kaliko Ayu.
Aloha, Mike Kaku, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you, we're a lot of here.
Uh, mahalo for taking the time to listen to the lahui regarding, um, the points that were brought up today at the board meeting. Upon listening to testimony by fellow lahui members, I, um, just feel called to say only a few things as most things have been said already. But the idea of historic preservation is relying primarily on what it means to be in pono, to be in balance, and what, and to recognize what has not been in balance and what has not been, um, held accountable, that what actions have not been held accountable to maintain the pono um, for the people of Hawaii and of the aina. And to, um, maintain pono and to strive for pono, um, as a dancer, something that I understand is that in order to maintain momentum, you have to commit. And so I appreciate the ways in which in the past year, um, OHA, each of you have um, taken the commitment to listen to us and we've and we've seen the results of that, and to please continue to keep doing so as others have stated. I also feel called to remind us that to be in pono is not a static state of being. It's not a place of stillness, but a place of movement. And so I ask how you will help us move as a people in a way in which we can arrive in pono since we are not there yet. And so in terms of using the momentum that you have created and listened to us as we've, at the Lahui, been facing, complete, just been battered for years and years. And so to arrive in a way that's pono, we need a strong bridge between this moment, this historic moment, and the historic moment that will arrive when we have the ability to live in pono. And I appreciate each of you for taking this seriously and to recognize that this is a fight that we do need you to support us in. So mahalo. And one more thing too, I, with Kahana, it relates to these military leases, because in order to understand and envision the future in which all of these occupied military lands or Hawaiian lands occupied by military, to envision the future in which we want to nurture them and malama them in the ways that our ancestors have laid out the groundwork for. We need to not compartmentalize where the help goes, because they're all intrinsically connected and deserve, yeah, the resources, because by caring for one Ahu Pua'a, it cares for all Hawaii. And so we need to maintain that. So mahalo, I just wanted to add that in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, mahalo for your testimony. Okay, last online testifier is Ka'ohu Vahilani. Then we'll go to trustee discussion.
Aloha, Mai Kako. Aloha, chairs and trustees, OHA. Ova' ka'ohu vahilani no poi'a maiau. Most of the alakai of hui kuliki, Kako, which you have heard about earlier this morning and yesterday with Oni Pa'a. We wanted, but anyway, hehava'yel ma'ama. I want to talk all the other speakers that came up about this measure. And talking about the lands that the military, the US military complex have been occupying. 1872, Schofield, General Schofield came here as a spy, and it is recorded, documented in Congress, US Congress, that he was saying he came to look at Pu'u Loa, Pearl Harbor. And it is stated, documented that he said, he never, and this, he came in 1872 now. So that was 21 years before the overthrow. So we were already recognized November 28, 1843, as a neutral friendly country-state, right? So he came as a spy in 1872. But instead of saying to Congress that the Hawaiian kingdom is ripe to be plucked, he said the Hawaiian islands are ripe to be plucked, because they wanted Pu'u Loa. Okay, now fast forward, fast forward 21 years later, January 16, 1893. The US military complex in the form of the USS Boston with 120 Marines was that Pu'u Loa. And they came under the guise to come to a friendly, recognized, international friendly, recognized country-state as the Hawaiian kingdom to protect American lives and American property. Well, we all knew what happened the next day, January 17, 1893. They went from Pu'u Loa straight to Pearl Harbor. 120 Marines got off the USS Boston, loaded to the tilt with ammunition, with two Gatling guns that could shoot 600 rounds a minute. And they went, they did a defensive posture, and it went straight to Iolani Palace. There was no American lives there at that day. There was no American property. And since that day, or since January 16, 1893, the presence of the US military complex has never left our shores. And you folks know well what they have done, right? Kapukaki, freaking Kahoolave, Makua, Pohakula. When is enough is enough. And each of our trustees over here, I know you, Kai, I think, Kulu, I know, we all stand from our kupuna, that 40,000 kupuna that was still here in 1893. And yes, the elephant in the room, there is no treaty of annexation. And like Davis Price said, the table, this is our table, trustees. You know, if you guys, like Queen Lili'o Kalani said, the voices of the people are the voices of God. So will you be na'aleo or kalahui Hawaii? Because if you folks stand up, we're going to stand up with you folks too. Mauna Kea went show in 2015 and 2019. And if the Lahui never show up for ekaya, everybody over here will agree with me that TNT will be built. Right, so let's be the voices of God. What Queen Lili'o Kalani said too, never cease to act, because you fear you may fail. We come from our kupuna. We cannot deny that. We are, we are part of this aina. This is our ancestral lands. You know, in 2019, we were planting over 5,000 koa trees and mamane trees up Ka'ohi, on another plateau of Mauna Kea. And while we were planting these koa seedlings, the bombing of Pohakula was going on, and the ground was shaking. And as I was countering this koa seedling, tears in my eyes, and I asked this koa seedling, hui kala maiau, please forgive me and forgive mankind for the desecration and the bombardment of aina. And please grow to be, to be the mightiest koa tree and outlive, outlive the desecration that the US military complex has done. You know, truth, from the beginning of time, man has made, humanity has made huge steps, right? In technology, everything that we're going into, right? But one thing we don't work on is peace. Why? Because freaking war is profitable to the freaking guys that are pulling the strings. But I can tell you guys this, all you trustees earlier, you guys stand up for the Lahui. The Lahui can stand up for you guys. Only us can save us. And yes, we are legally occupied. So why don't all can also do some presentations on what it would be to be independent again? We should all dream of what our kupuna was when we were, when we were a progressive kingdom. That's all I wanted for say. Mahalo, Anui.
Thank you. Mahalo, Anui. Thank you so much. Okay, we have taken all of our in-person and online testimony. And we have the action before us. Just to reiterate and recap Lena Allah's presentation. So the action item is to approve OHA's responsive next steps regarding the state's military lease negotiations with the US government. Part of that is a number of things. In the action item and the motion is to host community consultation sessions on OHA's military lease negotiation positions, to further inform OHA's negotiating position on military leases. OHA has already sent a letter to the governor requesting engagement and a place on the governor's joint negotiation team, and also that the Office of Hawaiian Affairs co-chair the technical working group alongside the Department of Land and Natural Resources. In addition to that, going back to the presentation given to us by Lena Allah, it would be, in addition to the two things I just mentioned, to also adopt a community statement of principles on military lease negotiations, to authorize the administration to advocate as necessary around extending lease period to enable compliance with governing laws such as HIPAA, in consultation with the native Hawaiian community where appropriate, such as at Pohakula. To authorize the administration to advocate to ensure compliance with HIPAA, HRS Chapter 6E. This would be the historical, cultural, archaeological inventory and survey work, land use zoning and other applicable laws. To authorize the administration to develop educational materials around military leases, the condemnation process, environmental review, and other issues relevant to informed community engagement. To authorize the administration to conduct community consultation on military leases as an ongoing area of work, up to and including developing an independent kapaa'ka' analysis of impacts based on information through consultation. Regarding the statement of principles, the statement has five principles. I'll read each one as its subject line. The first would be to include native Hawaiian community representation in decision-making, to vigorously pursue the cleanup and return of all lands leased to the United States military, to center accountability, oversight, and restitution, to follow the law. These would be the laws of the Hawaii State Constitution, Hawaii Revised Statutes, National Environmental Policy Act, Hawaii Environmental Policy Act, the National Historic Preservation Act, and other applicable laws. And the fifth would be to commit to transparency and consent. So those are the statements of principles. Lena Allah, does that summarize what the administration is requesting the board to take action on? Yes? Trustees, any discussion on those items? Yeah, trustee Kako?
Mahalo. Mahalo for the presentation, the discussion, and as well as the testimony. Mahalo, Anui, for being here with us in this process. It's key that we do remain, we keep on the pulse of the needs and concerns of our people, our Hawaiian people. And I think that's essential through community engagement and outreach, and also regarding that constant communication on all levels of government. It's very key. The other key part again, what was mentioned, advocacy, education, community engagement, and outreach. I think it's always essential to have aina acknowledgement. So with aina acknowledgement, oftentimes it's where these lands are referred to as former, former crown and government lands. However, I don't agree with that. The wording is incredibly important here. These are and continue to be our native Hawaiian crown and government lands of our Hawaiian kingdom. Ma'ama. Also known as the ceded lands of the Public Land Trust. And what we're hearing from our Kanaka Uivi within the community throughout the Pai'a'aina and here today is that the Hawaiian kingdom still exists. It still exists, however, the government was overthrown. What was mentioned today was treaty. There's also where we can refer to international law. But I think these are really key things for us to always keep in mind are the semantics and the wording here. These are our crown and government lands of the Hawaiian kingdom. Even though it's not the entire, the entirety of our lands, these are still our lands. And even what is considered now federal lands through executive order, they still fall under our crown and government lands. Therefore, we must still continue to advocate in any way possible. So I want that to be included in terms of how we're advocating within the community on all levels of government, and also in how we word our documents as well. Always preface it when we're referring to the, what is known as the ceded lands of the Public Land Trust, always preface it by referring to them as, these are our crown and government lands of our Hawaiian kingdom. Mahalo.
Okay. Trustees, any other discussion or questions for Lena Allah? I mean, that is a lot, Lena Allah. That you're asking, a lot of work, a lot of work for not just the administration, but for this board. Many of us spent all week last week on Hawaii Island for hours. And this was one of the most important topics that people wanted to discuss and are on their minds.
I would venture to say more than a week, because of the time with the Civic Association of Hawaiian Civic Club Convention as well.
Yep. Good point. Okay, and so I'm supportive of the administration's request. And there's a few things we want to announce as well. But does anyone have anything else on this particular action item to move forward?
You know, Chair, I think we've had in-depth discussion for the last two weeks and hearing the concerns of our people today. I think we're ready to vote on our position.
Okay. All right, let's, just before we vote, I'd like to touch on two things. One, as we were having our meeting, the governor issued a press release announcing the formation of an advisory committee for military leased lands. There are several native Hawaiian members of this advisory committee. There are William Bill Ayla, Ryan Kanaka Ole, Kurheu Lewis, Mahina Paishan, Duarte, Ed Sniffin, OHA's own Summer Silva, Kali Watson, and Noi Noi Wong Wilson, that will work together with other members of the advisory group, Lori McAllister Moore, as well as Scott Glenn, and serve on this advisory committee for military leased lands. One of the paragraphs in the governor's letter caught my attention, because it refers to statements made earlier this year by the Secretary of the Army that indicated that Army will possibly move toward condemnation. And that also the state of Hawaii has learned that the offices of the US Army Secretary and the US Department of Justice have begun consultations on the Army's legal right of condemnation for training lands in Hawaii. So we continue to hear condemnation coming from the governor's office and through this memo that he issued today. And there was a previous speaker, Ilima Long, who gave a very eloquent testimony on this issue, and she spoke about condemnation. And I have a, I have a statement in regards to this press release from the governor as well as ties into what Ilima spoke of, and specifically to condemnation. And so, you know, trustees, in this moment that we are faced with another threat of condemnation, we should remember that our greatest leaders stood tall in the face of far greater odds. With fewer resources, fewer allies, and the full weight of an expanding American empire pressing upon them, they still chose courage. They still chose principle. The threat of condemnation is nothing new. It's as old as Hawaii's first elected monarch, Lunalilo. It is the same tired tactic colonizers have used for generations. Recycled, repackaged, but always with the same intent, to divide us, to pressure us, to push us towards surrendering what is sacred. And the beauty of this archival record, the literal lael, the voices of our kupuna, is its reminder that our confrontation with condemnation is not an existential threat. It is a test of leadership. And if we fail to learn from the past, if we forget the lessons of who faced these very same trials with dignity and resolve, we risk becoming leaders unworthy of our people's trust, leaders who have forgotten what it means to serve. We were not called to lead by imitation. We are called to lead by integrity. Our measure is not found in polls or in political favor. Our measure is whether our ancestors, our kupuna, and the generations yet unborn would be proud of the choices that we make today. We do not lead to appease power. We lead to stand in truth, not to barter away our birthright for short-term convenience, but to affirm the enduring value of our aina, our people, and our kuliana to both. Trustees, this right now is our moment, OHA's moment. Our moment to show what true leadership looks like. Calm under pressure, steadfast in conviction, and grounded in aloha aina. We must also reject leadership rooted in fear. And we must refuse to move our people through intimidation or despair. Fear is the weapon of those without conviction. True leadership calls us to inspire, not to incite, to lift our Lahui with purpose, clarity, and hope. Let us model in our lifetime leaders who know who they are. Let us model in our lifetime leaders who know who they are, whom they serve, and from whom they descend. Chiefs and ali'i who led with intelligence, integrity and foresight, who stood firm against oppressive forces that sought to bend their will and dictate their choices. These me'e remind us that nothing is beyond the reach of courage and conviction, not even the seemingly inevitable. So today, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs launches aloha aina at oha.org, a comprehensive website on OHA's webpage that will have full educational resources, maps, historical letters, documents and information for our Lahui. We also launch a statewide anonymous community survey on military lease lands at aloha aina at oha.org. Additionally, our beneficiaries can email oha@alohaaina@oha.org. This Board of Trustees has now adopted and passed a proposed constitutional amendment in the twenty twenty-six legislative session to be placed on the twenty twenty-six electoral ballot to prohibit live-fire military training on states' public trust lands. OHA will also begin hosting statewide community meetings and workshops on military lease lands the first beginning on Wednesday, November twenty-sixth, at the University of Hawaii at Hilo, starting at six o'clock PM. OHA still awaits the opportunity to serve on Governor Green's joint negotiation team and to co-chair the technical working group alongside the Department of Land and Natural Resources. And OHA has encouraged that Interadministrator Summer Silva has been named to Governor Green's Advisory Committee for Military Lease Lands. In addition to the action we will be taking, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs is rising to the occasion to meet the greatest challenge to our state and our Lahui head-on. And if we have no further questions, let's vote. Roko?
Justi Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Justi Akina is excused, trustee?
Don't try to.
Okay, trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay? Trustee Souza has left.
Aye. I'm here.
Mahalo, thank you. Trustee Wahe'e?
Yes.
And Chair Kaheli?
Aye.
We have six yes votes.
Okay, thank you trustees and thank you to our community, uh, both online and in person that came out to speak on this very, very important issue. Next on our agenda is community concerns and celebrations. Trustees, do we have anything to announce? Hearing none, next item is announcements. Trustees, any announcements to make? The Board of Trustees will be meeting on Monday, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five at nine o'clock AM. Following the first week in December, the Board of Trustees will be meeting on the fourth of December, twenty twenty-five. And finally, we'd like to, um, extend our safe travels to our, uh, staff and trustees that are participating in WIPSY, uh, the World Indigenous Peoples Conference on Education in New Zealand, as well as two of our trustees that will be participating in Louisiana. You wanna describe, uh, trustee Akaka, that, uh, conference?
Hi, it's a convening of the National Foundation for Women Legislators, which gives the opportunity for women in government to come together and discuss current events and law and what we have in common in terms of what our challenges and celebrations are and how we can best represent as wahine in government.
Awesome. Any other announcements? Hearing none, can I get a motion to adjourn? Roko? Roko?
Um, justi Ahuna is excused, trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Justi Akina is excused. Justi Alapa has left the meeting, trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay? Trustee Souza?
Aye.
Trustee Wahe'e?
Yes.
And Chair Kaheli?
Aye.
We are adjourned at two five.